Good evening, everybody. Good evening all. This is August 7th, 2017, Moscow City Council meeting.
Art?
Would you join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Art. Can everybody hear me okay? Everybody hearing me okay out there? Okay. With their one announcement, there will not be an executive session this evening. I want to make that clear before we go into consent agenda. It's good to see a lot of folks here for on a night that we have a budget hearing, so I'm glad to see that. Thank you all very much. With that, I'll move on to item number one, which is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Jim and a second by Catherine to approve consent agenda. Let's start with Walter.
Aye.
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 Item number two, staff recognition report. Gary Redner, sir, do you have any staff recogni—
This evening.
Okay, thank you. Third thing is mayoral appointments, and I have two this evening that I would entertain council with, and that would be Jenny Ford for Farmers Market Commission. She's a Chamber of Commerce rep, expiration at 12/31/2018. And McGranny Hall on Fair and Affordable Housing Commission with an expiration at 12/31/2017. I entertain the motion.
I move to accept these appointees.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Art and a second by John to approve these two commissioned folks, Ms. Hall and Ms. Ford. Start the roll, John.
Aye.
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 Okay, I know I seen Jenny in here somewhere. Jenny, you want to stand up so people could recognize you, and if you want, you can say a few words. Is Ms. Hall here as well this evening? I do not see her. Come on up, and one of the things I always like to say and comment on is our commissions in this town are very, very important, whatever commissions are, and we certainly appreciate the volunteerism that folks have with us, so. With that, Jenny?
Thank you, Bill, I appreciate it. I'm Jenny Ford, the Executive Director of the Moscow Chamber of Commerce, and I'm really looking forward to participating in the evaluation, the organization, and the progress of the Farmers Market Commission with the commission themselves and also with the staff. So, thank you, Bill, very much, and counsel.
Thank you, Jenny, as well. Okay, with that, I'll move on to item number four, which is public comment and mayor's response period. And what we do, as long as there is not something on tonight's agenda or in front of planning and zoning or in front of the Board of Adjustments, you're willing or you are available to come up and speak. We'll give you three minutes. Please state your name and address and tell us what's on your mind.
Mayor and council members, my name's Ed Button. Some of you may know me or remember me. I'm here representing Family Promise of the Palouse, which includes Moscow and Pullman and outlying areas, other communities, and what I'm here to do today is I want to thank Mayor Lambert from the Board of Directors, the staff of Family Promise, the volunteers of Family Promise, which there are over 700, the churches and congregations that make up Family Promise and provide the services, and the families that are helped by Family Promise of the Palouse. And what we do is we provide shelter, meals, and life training to address the homelessness issues that are faced by families in our area. And it's one of these issues that is kind of a silent problem that not everyone is aware of. Family Promise of the Palouse, though, is a chapter of the National Organization of Family Promise, and it's clear across the country, and I wasn't aware of how large it was until I became a board member. And just some of the things that have—the Family Promise of the Palouse has provided in our area, we've had 9,085 bed nights, we've provided 27,255 meals. Again, we had 700 trained volunteers, 10 participating host congregations, 10 partnering congregations, and we have over 36,000 volunteers. And why I bring this up is Mayor Lambert has chosen as the beneficiary for the golf tournament that we're going to be playing this Friday, so Family Promise will receive the benefits of the profits made from that charity. And I just wanted to thank Mayor Lambert and everyone that's participating in it. There also is still time to—I think we have 17 teams, but I don't believe we're going to turn anybody away, so everybody in here and within the sound of my voice is welcome to join. So, anyway, thank you for this time to speak.
Thank you, Eddie. Family Promise is something that is very big in the Palouse, and we all know that homeless issues strike any community, doesn't matter if it's Moscow or where it's at. And so it's fun to be able to do something like have a golf tournament, have it a fun day, and it's this coming Friday, August 11th, starts out at 8:00, and yes, people can put teams together at last minute. That'd be great to have, and we can host up to 36 teams. It's going to be at the University of Idaho, Ed, and it'll be a fun day, and the proceeds, what we earn on that, is going to Family Promise, so that's a big deal for our community. So, last year it was for alternative violence, and so we're moving forward, so thank you very much, Eddie.
Well, thank you, yeah, again, everyone, it was a good time. Time well spent, money well spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
My name is Tim Gressback. I live at 614 South Adams Street, and, Mr. Mayor, we had lawyers from across the state in a few weeks ago, and you were nice enough to give us a welcome when the Idaho State Bar had its annual meeting. We had the Chief Justice there, the university president, President Staben gave a welcome, but I think the crowd was really enamored with your presentation, and you've been a wonderful ambassador for this city. And the attendees, the 350 folks that came in across the state, signed this poster of the Palouse. We've taped to it, because we had—the last time the State Bar was here was in the 1930s, but no one was sure when it was. So, this will memorialize it. It has the signatures of the attendees. We put the brochure and the folks that attended, so maybe in 50 or 100 years in there. But we're actually, because of the way you've represented this city, I'm very confident that the State Bar will get on the regular rotation, that Moscow will get on the regular rotation. We won't have to wait another many, many decades before we have it again, so thank you so much. I don't know where you might want to put this. We've got a city supervisors with an office and the city attorney, and they're both attorneys, of course, so thank you so much. And as you take this, Mr. Mayor, I just have to tell you that there were a lot of folks who came back to Moscow, who either went to college here, went to the university, or they went to law school here. And person after person would tell me that this city is not the same town they went to school in, that it was good then, but it's much better now. So, just wanted to thank you for what you've done.
We're going to get him to get—we're going to come over here, Gary, so.
And then I'm going to break a little bit on you, Tim. I'll bet that goes in the mayor's office, too.
Absolutely. I got to share everything. Tim is the president of this, and they were having this thing for everybody to sign. I had no idea what it was, and of course, there's my signature right there. I was there, here's evidence. And, you know, when I first found out about this, Mahmud Cheek, who his dad and mom, friends of mine from years ago, Mahmud went to school with my kids as well as the two daughters. Well, anyway, he asked a couple of years ago, as did you, Tim, and Tim was the one that really spearheaded to make sure it did happen in Moscow, and I got the chance and the pleasure, and it was a pleasure to get up and speak to people, and I got a chance to meet our Chief Justice, which was a big deal, of our Supreme Court here for the state of Idaho as well as others, the being in law school, Dean Adams and President Staben, and a bunch of folks there, but it was with great pride. And at first, I thought it was in 1861. That's the first time I heard it, which I told everybody that was like—I was like 10 years old then. Wow, 37, I hear now, it's like 14 years before, well, we'll just leave it at that, 14 years before I was born, but the thing of it is, and I made this statement, oh my god, you know, we got the law school here, we need to have these types of things here in Moscow, Idaho, because it's a big deal for a university in our community. So, thank you for your leadership in that, Tim. I appreciate it.
You bet.
Hi, my name is Katie Ball. I live at 601 East Third Street. I'm nine years old. The thing that I like best about my neighborhood is that I can walk lots of fun places like downtown, the library, and East City Park. Sometimes my older sister walks with me to East City Park to play. Crossing Third Street is scary because there are some cars that go fast and forget to stop because there is no stop sign. There are more—if there are more cars, I could not go to the park without a grown-up, and then I could not play there as often.
Thank you, young lady.
I live at 411 South Hayes, and I will address the park also. I only realized recently that at some point, I'm not sure when, the speed limit along the two blocks that are on the south side of the park was changed from 25 miles an hour, which is the city's default speed limit, was raised to 30, and I found that kind of shocking. I shared that with some people who said they'd been biking on that for years and had never noticed it, and they were shocked. It's also 30 on the east side, the whole east side, and I find that really ironic, inappropriate, and confusing. Why would we raise the default speed limit within the city along our heavily-used main city park? I don't get it. I'd like to know what the reasoning was there. Oh, and by the way, it's only for four blocks. Woo, people can—and, you know, sometimes I'm driving along in those 30 mile an hour speed areas on Blaine and on Hayes right there. I give it a whirl to see what that feels like, and it's scary. It's not just because I have gray hair, but might be because of my life experience and what I've learned and known and read about how speed kills. So, I think instead of raising the speed limit, we should lower it, and not just back to the default, but 20. Like many boroughs and places in New York City have gone below, they changed their default from 30. They did this in November of 2014. All of New York City changed it from a default of 30 down to 25, and then many neighborhoods said, "We got to go slower than that," and they said 20 is plenty in this particular area, in this stretch of street. So, I'd like to see us lower along the park to 20. In addition to that, I'd like to see four-way stops on all four corners, not just on the northwest corner. Yay for that. But we need three more four-way stops. It's a park. People park there, cross the streets to get there. Second of all, I was—I was out of town when the council had their midsummer workshop at which this thing that's on the agenda tonight, the budget, was—
I missed, ma'am, we—we're—
I'm not going to talk—I'm not going to talk about the budget.
Okay, because there's going to be a public hearing for that as well.
I know, and I'm going to be here for it. I did go online today to prepare for tonight, and I did find the summary and read through the summary, all 254 pages. I skimmed some of them, but on page 17, I noticed this. This was the city saying, "There is insufficient public information and community engagement." And I thought, "That is right. That is right." We found out some things today that were—I feel happened—a misunderstanding that we think came from a newspaper article that was printed the day after—
Ma'am, your time is is up, but you're going to—you're going to get a chance to speak at the public hearing, so stick around.
I will, I will.
All right.
Last thing, though. You ask us to give our names and addresses. I think it'd be great if all of you did every meeting at the beginning, names and addresses. That'd be nice.
Thank you.
Reciprocal courtesy.
Okay, with that, we are going to move on to item number five, which is a Citizens Commission report on a Sustainable Environment Commission. We got Tyler Palmer here and Scott Fidel, who has been on that commission for a long time. Founding member of that commission, I think, Scott.
All right. Mr. Mayor, council, I really am excited to be here tonight to introduce Mr. Fidel and talk a little bit about the Sustainable Environment Commission. This year, we had the great opportunity through my department, our Environmental Services Group, to act as the staff liaison for this commission. Kyle Steele, who's our Environmental Services Group supervisor, is the staff liaison, and there's really been some exciting things happening with this commission. It's something that—I think that the role of the commissions is so often is said in this chamber, is so critical to our community. It's something that we rely heavily on, the expertise and feedback that we get from so many wonderful people in our community, and that is definitely not the exception with the Sustainable Environment Commission. They provide us with a lot of great insight. We have a lot of things that we run by them, things that ideas that we have that we want to get some more eyeballs on and get some feedback on. The city really takes sustainability seriously, and so the Sustainable Environment Commission is an active commission. Just this year, we've launched a new internal recycling program. We've been heavily promoting our conservation program, and we'll be bringing a report to the council on the impact of the conservation program. As many will see, we've got our city hall wisecape that took place, that's really coming into its own this year. We metered that entirely separately so we can track all the resources that go into it, and we'll be bringing a report to the council about the impacts of that. Our greenhouse gas inventory is shortly going to come before this chamber. We have a continued success with our EcoDriver program. In this last year, we saw less than below 50,000 gallons of fuel usage, and that's the first time we'd seen that in over a decade. And shortly, we'll be bringing a proposal for a set of environmental stewardship awards, which is a program that we hope to help promote sustainability, and all of these things are things that have gone before our Sustainable Environment Commission, that they've helped us and helped us craft these programs. So, we really just couldn't appreciate more of the work that they do, and I'll turn the time over to Scott, who will give you a little more information on what's been going on.
Thanks, Tyler. Mayor, council, first of all, I want to thank Tyler for a great year of staff liaison work for us. He's been terrific, and the staff liaison provides a valuable role for us in sort of being able to bounce some things off and say, "So, how should we approach this?" with, you know, that kind of thing, and so really appreciate that. Okay, I'm just going to take a few minutes to update you on some of the things that we have been doing and some things that we're working on. That's our mission statement, basically, to solicit advice and information about sound environmental management practices for promoting the public health and safety of the citizens of Moscow. So, some recent activities, we were cosponsors of the Pollinator Symposium, Be Safe in Our Backyards and Public Spaces. That was cosponsored by the Palouse Environmental Sustainability Coalition, the Palouse Prairie Foundation, the Palouse Group Sierra Club, and Invertebrate Ecology. And a lot of the focus of this was bringing some attention to the problems that we're having nationwide as well as on the Palouse with the disappearance and reduction in population of pollinators, which is a serious issue. Following up on that, I've done this the past couple of years, I've established a relationship with the local radio stations through my work in rendezvous in the park as well as the Sustainable Environment Commission, so I leaned on some of my colleagues there and wrote a radio spot which they produced and ran on inland, basically inland part broadcasting stations as well as Pullman Radio. And it was—the spot was run during National Pollinator Week, which was June 19th to 25th, and here's the spot.
Most of us realize that pollinating insects like bumblebees are important in the reproduction and fruiting of flowering plants, but what you may not realize is that pollinators are in crisis. Honeybees are dying in unprecedented numbers, and native pollinator species are disappearing. The causes are a combination of factors, including loss of bee habitat and use of pesticides. June 19th to 25th is National Pollinator Week, and here are some ways you can help our flying friends. First, reduce or eliminate pesticide use, and if you must use them, apply when pollinators aren't active, like in the evening. Create pollinator-friendly habitat by reducing your lawn area and planting a border of native flowering plants. Plant a variety of flowering plants to attract and feed butterflies, bees, and hummingbirds throughout the growing season. To learn more about how you can help bring back pollinators on the Palouse, visit pollinatorwatch.org. This message brought to you by the City of Moscow Sustainable Environment Commission.
In anticipation of future stormwater management issues, we invited Rob Bukert, the manager of Pullman Stormwater Management Program, to address the commission and give us sort of a, "Here's what's been happening in Pullman," address. And I got to tell you, it was pretty scary. The budget was a major surprise to us in terms of not only what they budgeted, but how inadequate that seemed to be once they've gotten going. So, we've got some fun ahead of us. We also received a report on the impacts and successes of Moscow's water conservation program from city staffer Nicole Baker. Oops, hello, oops, sorry, sorry. Okay, and we also invited the city's sustainability intern Kelly Cooper to present a summary of the 2016 greenhouse gas inventory results, which I must say were quite impressive, so One thing the commission has been doing for a number of years is providing a list of nominations and justifications for the nominations to the mayor for his annual Earth Day awards. And we did that again this year and nominated the following individuals and businesses in the following categories. In terms of what's next, one thing we're working on, which has been occupying a lot of our time and will be occupying a lot of our time in the future, is concern that some citizens are brought to the commission about the use of pesticides in city parks and playfields. So, this is something that we've been doing some research on. I'm chairing a subcommittee on this, which is actually meeting tomorrow night, and we've been in contact with Dwight, letting him know we're doing this, and hope to bring Dwight to a future meeting in the near future, actually, so we can have a discussion with him about some of the concerns and also some recommendations that we're putting together based on our The commission will also be manning a table at the August 26 Farmers Market, informing citizens about our activities and giving us a chance to do some recruiting, though I think we only have one spot open, and that may not be open very long, so—which is a nice problem to have. We are also planning to—oops, hello, what happened to that next flyer? There it is, okay. Cosponsor a movie film in the co-op film series called Keep the Hive Alive. You see a continuing theme here, which documents the life and challenges of the honeybee, and that film is scheduled to show in September. That's the current roster of members and the staff liaison, Gina Terresio is our council liaison, and Kyle Steele has taken over from Tyler as their staff liaison. And as you can see, we're almost full. Debbie Cadillac and Heath Bingham are two very new members in the last few months. And one of the things I'm very proud of, because it goes back to the seven years I was chair, we continue to be able to keep membership from Moscow High School, and we've had continuing membership from high school students, and I got to tell you, those kids are terrific. They participate, they show up, and they do work, and it's really encouraging to see how involved they are. Okay, I'll be glad to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
Scott, I got to go. One thing I want to share about—Scott, years ago when I first got on council, Scott was the chair of the Sustainable Environment Commission, and I was the liaison back in the day, it's been like, I don't know, 12 years ago now, Scott, or something like that.
Right.
And it was a very good thing for me. It was a good education for me to learn a lot of different things about just all kinds of stuff, you know, whether it be about bees or whatever, or recycling and all the different things. And I think this city has came a long, long ways in the last decade on carbon emissions and a bunch of other things, and a lot of that is directly for the commission that you are a part of, Scott, so I certainly appreciate it.
And we'd like to take some credit for educating you about some—
Well, you know, well, you know—
It's a change in your attitude as mayor, which we think is great.
See, you got to have a—well, see, you know—
Got that early experience with you, right?
Well, Scott, I'm an old farm boy, you know, but once we—
That's right.
Well, once we learn a few times, well, we got it, see, so—
Thank you. Any other questions?
Jim?
I'd like to also recognize Scott for all the work he does on rendezvous in the park. He brings a lot to the table in terms of marketing and programming to that program, which was started by the city and now is self-sustaining, and we had one of our best years ever, and that's in large part due to your efforts, sir, so I thank you very much.
Well, since I got the podium, let me say thank you to the city for the wonderful support. We put over 1,500 people through the gates in three nights. It's one of the biggest rendezvous we've ever had for our 35th anniversary, so thanks for all the support.
Well, it's an icon in Moscow in the middle of the summer, so it's been terrific, Scott.
Thank you, well.
You bet. Thank you. Okay, with that, we are going to move on to item number six, which is our public hearing on the city of Moscow's 2018 annual budget, and Gary Redner will be presenting for us.
May I speak for a second, please? In the interest of full disclosure, I need to recuse myself from the part of the budget this evening that is directly related to the Partnership for Economic Prosperity, because that's what I do in my day job. I am the executive director of that organization. I am very willing and able, however, to vote for the rest of the budget, sir.
Okay, so you'll be abstaining from that portion of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, Gary, you have the podium, sir.
Well, we're here to talk about the fiscal year 2018 budget. We've got several slides. We had a budget workshop on July 10th where we went through not only this presentation, but also the line item detail to the city council in about what ended up being about a four-and-a-half-hour presentation. So, at that time, by way of history, and we'll go into a little bit of what goes into the budget, but suffice it to say, it's a fairly in-depth process. We'll be going through that piece by piece tonight. Try—I know the council realizes, the council has seen all of this before, but we'll go into enough detail so that the public can be informed as well. So, again, this is a slide that you've seen previously. These are some of the things that the council has indicated that they want to focus on. As you can read through all of these, starts with relationships, goes to our businesses, providing affordable housing, safety, goodwill, and collaborative spirit of the community, good workforce to spur economic development, economic vitality, that citizens and members of the community recognize and understand city services provided, and that they're pleased with the level of those city services. As the council knows, every two years, we conduct a citizen survey, have been since 2001, and I believe we're on our seventh citizen survey at this point, and that allows us to continue to measure citizen satisfaction with a random sampling of citizens around the city. Exceptional public management, without being too self-serving, what we try to do is provide services to the city council and the mayor and the public so that your city hopefully is well-managed and we provide good information. Parks and rec opportunities to facilitate business and tourism growth, again, one of the legs of economic development that we focus on as well. And lastly, effective transportation and utility infrastructure that is cost-effective and durable. We want to make sure that when a public infrastructure decision is made, is that it is a lasting decision and the public's funds are spent well and on activities that will last the community as long as possible. So, the strategic plan. As you know, the city entered into a strategic plan approximately a year and a half now, and this was one of the essential elements of that. Our essential legacy is to build and to pass to future generations a premier community that leads by example, is safe, financially stable, well-managed, economically vibrant, harmonious, progressive, and a great place to live and work. Pretty lofty goals, but the strategic plan broke each of these out across departments and across the city itself, and that's what we strove to implement in our strategic plan and in the budget. These are some of the major challenge areas that the council was advised and rated. As you can see, we have external and internal strategic— As you can see, we have external and internal strategic, or excuse me, major challenger, as I keep wanting to say municipal. So, as you can see at the top of this, these are things that the council wanted to address as quickly as possible. Deteriorating pavement conditions. Anybody who's been in Moscow in the last week and a half knows that we're fixing a lot of roads. The winter was very hard on the roads, and there, I can't remember what the percentage is of aging infrastructure in the United States, but suffice it to say that it's being recognized by municipalities, states, and the federal government, and more resources are being brought to bear on repairing those roads. Declining enrollment at the University of Idaho negatively impacting Moscow. This is building on the collaborative relationship that the city has with the university, the county, the Chamber of Commerce, and the citizens to try and spur economic development and enhance the experience at the University of Idaho in order to increase enrollment. Inadequate law enforcement radio infrastructure is an area that we'll address in a little while, is being addressed in future budgets as well as this budget. Deteriorating waste collection system, those are sewer pipes, they're being addressed as well. Insufficient revenue jeopardizing service levels, as you know, and we'll talk a little bit about in this presentation, the state of Idaho is very restrictive as to how cities can raise money. Local option sales taxes, not an option for us. Increasing property taxes is limited by the state. There are a lot of areas that have, other states have, that we are restricted. So, we wanna look at being as efficient as we can. And declining employment base weakens local economy. When we do economic development, we find that some employers, prospective employers, can't find the employment base that they want here. They don't have sufficient workers in certain trades to be able to locate here, so that's something that we want to address as well. Internal are things that the city can address within its own structure. Insufficient law enforcement staffing to meet community demand. We addressed this almost immediately when we hired Eric Jurnis, who was our forensic detective, who will be receiving an award, or has received an award, a national award, be presented to him back in Washington, DC. And we'll also have a local presentation this Wednesday at the police department for his work in protecting children and internet crimes. Deteriorating substandard police department building in vulnerable, unsafe location. It's pretty legend in Moscow that having a police department on a one-way street with southern access or southern egress only by an alley is inadequate. So, that is something the council asked us to try and provide some proposals to address. Inadequate fleet facility reduces efficiency. And inadequate shop workspace, we're currently working on planning for renovating or providing alternatives to the council for our city shop space. So, those were the tier-one MCA's. So, again, what have we done? Fiscal year 2017 accomplishments. One of the things that we hope to address in a bond issue last year, excuse me, earlier this year, was purchasing fire apparatus. This traditionally has been done in a bond issue. The last bond issue that was passed by the citizens for purchase of fire engines was in 1991. We estimated what the cost of a fire apparatus was. It was around $2 million, not counting half of a ladder truck that the University of Idaho has committed to assisting us with. It was going to be about $2 million. The fire fleet needed to be upgraded, so the council directed us to move forward and identify ways to be able to start putting money away on a yearly basis so that we can buy these fire engines on a systematic cycle. So, we've done that. You'll see that there is $350,000 in this year's budget to address the purchase accumulation of funding for fire engines. Council also moved forward with the purchase order for a 500 and, I believe, $14,000 fire engine, which will be delivered in February or March of 2018. That was done during this current fiscal year 2017. Pavement maintenance, last year council approved a budget which included $700,000 for our pavement maintenance program. Historically, that has been funded anywhere from $250,000 a year to around $400,000 a year, forcing the public works department to accumulate funding for two years sometimes so they could get enough money to do major projects. So, council has addressed that. And in 2018, proposed in the budget at this point, council, in front of them tonight, in the appropriation ordinance, will authorize $874,346. As you can see, we took to heart the council's major challenge area, its top priority, and every extra dollar that we had was put into the pavement maintenance program, which accounts for that really odd-looking number up there. Development of community event division, this was to provide more efficient management of the Moscow Farmers Market, and that was to address this MCA, insufficient use of strategic planning to inform management and budgeting. We found there were areas where we could be more efficient, not only in the Farmers Market, which has currently been under the purview of the Arts Department, but also to create a ancillary division, if you will, called Community Events. We have a lot of community events that Parks and Rec gets a piece of, the police get a piece of, administration gets a piece of, so on and so forth. So, what we tried to do is create a place we could hold that, and that's why in this budget, you will see a community events area as well. And that's under a different fund. We used to have a Parks and Rec fund. We've combined the Parks and Rec Revenue Fund with Arts and Community Events as well. So, you'll see a little bit different bookkeeping as well. Facilities needs, one of the things, there is a proposal in this year's budget for a, we call it a placeholder because we don't know the exact number at this point, but the number that the council has directed us is $10 million. That $10 million is for, to address some of the city's infrastructure needs, specifically the police department, and relocating the police station to either a new facility or a repurposed facility. And as the community knows, Gritman Medical Center has indicated that they would like to talk to the city about perhaps repurposing the federal building downtown, and it could house not only the police department, but some other city operations as well, taking care of the city's facilities needs into the foreseeable future. So, that will be the focus of a workshop that we have tentatively set for September 11th, and that is the purpose of the bond issue that we'll talk about in a little while. So, further addressing our major challenge areas, we talked about the general obligation bond. We talked about limited revenue and the need for infrastructure in streets and parks. As I indicated, Idaho state law limits taxes, property tax increase to 3% of the previous year's levy. So, our annual increase this year is $167,000, or excuse me, $157,000, that was last year. It is $160,000 in this fiscal year. We don't have the option for local option sales tax, which is what funds a lot of improvements in other states that allow that. We looked at a general obligation bond or loan. The city has $21 million of bonding capacity. Right now, we have one outstanding general obligation bond. It is the Hamilton Low Aquatic Center Bond, which is coming up on 20 years. Fiscal year 18 will see us pay that bond off. So, that is the only general obligation bond that we have that the city pays on at this point, the public pays on. The general obligation bond, as we move forward and we talk about it on September 11th and into the fall, is the police facility, public facilities, equipment. And the reason I put that in there is because equipment included the fire apparatus, and it will have to be addressed by the city council that taken off the bond measure because it's being addressed elsewhere. Infrastructure, some of the things we looked at was perhaps renovation of, partial renovation of Main Street as well downtown, and as well as some street. We've addressed both of those. We think in a way that the council will have to look at and determine if they want to include in this measure as well. Park development was an area that was also included as a partial goal of a general obligation bond. Council made the decision through resolution earlier this summer that they would take the balance of the Hamilton funding, almost $2 million, and would allocate or obligate, if you will, by policy, those funds to be used to fund child playgrounds in the undeveloped city parks and to put accessible sidewalks so children can access those playgrounds. That is in conjunction with a new Parks and Rec program where Dwight and his crew have certified installers of playgrounds in order to get greater efficiencies. Having that funding available allows us to take advantage of buying opportunities as well as their program of incremental park development. So, the Parks crews will work to landscape, will work to scene, and work to install irrigation in those parks as well. So, we're trying to address these needs as quickly as we can within the funding that we have. Again, general obligation bond, and the reason we call it a bond or loan, it's actual public debt. So, whether it's a bond or whether it's a loan doesn't make any difference. It allows those funds with 66.23% of the people, if they vote for it, it will raise taxes incrementally to take care of that. This takes care of, explains some of the reasons for doing that. Bond rates right now are very low. The City of Moscow, because of some of the financial work that's been done, the leadership that we've had, the comprehensive annual financial report, for instance, allows a pretty good bond rating and uninsured bond rating that provides for lower interest rates, and we'd like to take advantage of that if we can. It costs the public less if you can borrow money at low rates, obviously. It's the reason people refinance their houses, so on and so forth. City is no different. So, this is the process, summer, fall of 2017, preparation and scoping. We're in the middle of doing that now. We are in the process of reviewing a architectural assessment of the federal building. We have some other things that are going on, and hopefully we'll be prepared on September 11th for that council workshop. Winter 2017, council will have to direct how they wish to proceed with the bond and how to get it ready for voter consideration. In the spring of 2018, we will begin the public information process. Remember, we've used our strategic plan, we've used the citizen survey, all as preparation to move this forward. So, we will move that forward, have a lot of public meetings, and inform the public of the options. May of 2018 is when the bond election would occur. And again, 66.23% is the high number. It's more than the 51, or excuse me, we call it a supermajority. A lot of states have a 60% approval. State of Idaho is 66.23%. So, it's a high hurdle, but we hope that if we can put together a package that the public will accept and wants the city to move forward, we will be able to do that. Okay, moving on to the overview of the budget process. It's a four-month preparation process. That is a conservative estimate. Really, as soon as we're done with the audit, we begin working on the budget. The audit is completed in late December, and we almost immediately begin working on budget process. We utilize the strategic plan, we incorporate the major challenge areas, and we look at prior council goals. At this point, the budget is balanced, that's a requirement of Idaho state law, is amounts to a gross amount of $79,896,719. That includes $10 million of proposed bond revenues. So, if you're, if the bond would not, is not approved, then that number would be $69,896,719. During this presentation, we'll talk briefly about trends and comparison and go into budget highlights. The budget document has these purposes. It's a fiscal policy manual. We use it to guide our operations. It's our financial plan, although we're in the throes of completing a long-range financial plan. It is an annual and biannual financial plan, and it's a communication device. If you go on the city's website, you can see the budget. We have budgets that are available for folks to use. It's one of the most readable budgets that I've been involved in, and the idea is for transparent communication of the city's financial and operational goals. Again, we talk about major challenge areas and some of these previous council goals that continue to be worked on. Just very quickly, these are the different governmental funds and business-type funds. I'll go through those for people who can't see them. The general fund is the catch-all fund for most of the city's general operations, police, fire, general government, finance, Parks and Rec, or excuse me, most of the things that you see every day, all of the things that make the city work from an administrative standpoint. Then we have special revenue funds, our street fund, Parks and Recreation, the community playfields, arts, 1912, community events, the transit center. Then we have construction funds. We have the capital projects funds, which is how we fund projects within the City of Moscow. LID construction and the Hamilton Fund are also construction funds. Debt service funds, we have the bond and interest fund. That's where the funding for property tax collection and payment of the Hamilton Low Aquatic Center Bond would come from. It's where you will find the proposed $10 million revenue for the proposed bond issue. Then we have business-type funds. Enterprise funds, we call them water, sewer, and sanitation. These are the things that Idaho law allows the city to charge for the reasonable provision of those services. We have three such funds, water, sewer, and sanitation. Those are the ones you get the utility bill for every month. Then we have internal service funds. Internal service funds are those funds that provide services to city departments typically. So, if you have a vehicle in your department, you will be charged for the replacement of that vehicle, the operation of that vehicle, the depreciation, the repair, and the operating cost. Information systems as well. Council all has iPads in front of them. Council's budget is credited with a certain amount of money for information systems to provide services and infrastructure for that as well. Property taxes, where does it go? Dollars' worth of property tax paid in the City of Moscow does not go to the City of Moscow. If you are charged a dollar within the City of Moscow, it's split up like so. City of Moscow takes 26.3% for our operations and capital. We have that one outstanding bond at 1.1%, brings it to 27.4% of that property tax dollar goes to the city. 35.6% and 2.8% go to the Moscow School District. Latont County is 23%, Cemetery 1.0, North Latont Highway District 7.3, and Latont County Free Library District 3.1%. So, again, out of a dollar of tax, property tax paid in the City of Moscow, the city is in fact receiving 27.4 cents. Okay, so what does that, what are the high points? The budget as proposed, 3% property tax increase, the general fund would receive $5,471,087 of that. We have $174,129 in debt service, that is for the Hamilton Low Aquatic Center Bond. The increase over fiscal year 2017 is $183,125. As I indicated, about $160,000 of that is represented by the 3% property tax increase, $4.92 per $1,000 of assessed valuation. New construction value, the 3% limitation is for limitation on the previous year's levy. You're also allowed to count any new construction that did not exist in the previous calendar year. So, if a new house goes up, a new building goes up, then that is added as new construction. You apply your levy to that as well. And then you have your annexation value. In this case, it was about $341,000, which, when you apply the city's levy to it, amounts to $1,632. That is the amount of property taxes out of a $79 million budget that is supported by property tax. Okay, 2016 Idaho levies per thousand, this is the City of Moscow here. This is the average, $7.50 per thousand. Moscow was at $4.73. So, the city is fairly efficient with the funds that it is given. The city council has always recognized that because of the high percentage of non, or exempt property, non-taxable property in the city, that the folks in Moscow bear a high tax burden. So, council's always been very circumspect about raising taxes. So, that's why that levy is $2.80, if my math is correct, something like that, less than the average in the state of Idaho. Okay, tenure comparison, where does the city's levy compare to all the taxes? And as you can see, as we're comparing ourselves to Coeur d'Alene and Lewiston, Moscow is in the yellow here, so we've been fairly, if I have that correct, blue, sorry. Don't want to be the yellow. So, blue, as you can see, we've been...
That's our friends down south.
Yeah. We've been fairly steady across. There have been some where property values go up, where the levy actually decreases, and then some that have been pretty steady. Lewiston, as you can see, is fairly flat across that same time. But as you can see, the percentage of levy going to the city itself is significantly less than our peers. Again, three largest taxing entities in Latont County. You've got Latont County in the green, Moscow School District in the gray, and City of Moscow in the orange. As you can see, the school district, because of the nature of... As you can see, the school district, because of the nature of the fact that they have override levies, so on and so forth, they take a fairly large chunk of the tax dollar in order that they can provide the best educational system possible. But it does have impacts on the other partners, being the county and the city. Exempt property estimates, and this goes back, these are, the, these are two thousand and ten estimates based upon properties that are exempt from taxation. If you look over here, this is a two thousand and seventeen, or excuse me, two thousand and sixteen valuation. As you can see, the numbers are almost equal. Again, these are two thousand and ten estimates, and they're based on the valuation, insurance value of improvements on tax-exempt property, does not include the underlying land. So as you can see, we've got about two point two billion dollars, two point three billion dollars of value in the city of Moscow, of which one point one-five is tax-exempt. So we are operating a city of about twenty-five thousand residents on taxes generated from one-half of the valuation of property in the city. So, going through general fund revenues very quickly, as I indicated, total general fund revenues are fifteen million, two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars. That is a three point nine percent increase over fiscal year two thousand and seventeen. That is as a result of a three percent property tax increase. Remember, the, as I just showed you, out of that fifteen million dollars, about fifteen point six million dol, or excuse me, five point six million dollars is property tax. So we have other revenue sources as well. State share revenue, state sales tax and state liquor tax, we've all seen incremental increases in those. Franchise fees, which we'll talk about a little bit as well. Franchise fees are charged on, as a three or five percent percentage of all revenues generated by these utilities within the city of Moscow. So the electric, Avista pays three percent of their gross revenues generated. Solid waste pays five percent. Gas pays three percent. TV cable pays five percent. That is a state franchise, not a city franchise, but it still pays five percent. Nine-on-one emergency dispatch fees are a tax on cellphone and landline use. Building permit and plan revenues, we've got a few screens about that. These are the types of things that go into there, permits and plan reviews. Then we have transfers in from water, sewer, sanitation and streets. This is the value of services provided by general fund, for instance, engineering, finance, utility billing, administration, city attorney's office, building department, so on and so forth, provided to the enterprise funds. Just like anything else, it costs money in order to administer, provide legal services, engineering services, so on and so forth. And then we have fund balance. And fund balance is essentially what's left in the bucket that we maintain, utilized for future capital needs, allocations, accumulations, so on and so forth. Foregone amount, one thing that the city has done is, as I indicated, you're allowed to levy taxes, up to three percent of previous year's levy, budget amount, taxes levy. And if you choose not to take that, as the council did last year, the council elected not to take the full three percent. So those amount, that percentage of taxes which are authorized but are not taken, are banked or put in a foregone amount that is maintained, the percentage is maintained by the state tax commission. The council, at any time, if they wish to utilize those funds, have to go back, have a separate public hearing, which would be at the same time that we have this public hearing, and would authorize taking those taxes. In the past, council has taken it for a couple of things. Replacement investment revenues for the Hamilton Fund in order to offset the cost of the Hamilton, or excuse me, the Hamilton Indoor Recreation Center, when Hamilton funds were used to pay off the certificates of participation for that several years ago. To provide permanent funding for police officers that were grant-funded positions, and if we wanted to maintain those officers, we needed to find funding, that's where that came from. Providing funding for the city's participation in the runway realignment project at the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport was one other place that the councils utilized those funds. In fiscal year eighteen, no foregone amount is proposed. The current available balance is two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. So if the council wanted to this year, at this time, or next year, in this same timeframe, could authorize going back and picking those up if they wanted. Property tax revenues and CPI rate. As you can see, the property tax is here in the blue, CPI is in the gold. So you can kind of see from two thousand and nine, two thousand and seventeen, this is the period of the Great Recession. So as you can see, they're back on track going forward after seeing quite a disparity there from two thousand and ten through two thousand and fifteen. State sales, liquor tax and revenue sharing, as I indicated during the original budget. Good thing about Idaho is that people keep drinking in trying economic times, and that generates taxes. And those are shared with local government according to a formula by the state of Idaho. So as you can see, evidence that the economy is improving slowly. So we continue to move forward there. And that's one of the reasons for the increased funding in the general fund. Franchise fees, same thing. They're moving ahead as our population increases, as the use of electricity or gas goes up. Typically, what happens is, if you have a hard winter, of course, you have more gas revenues, more electric revenues based upon that. We do see some trends in TV cable. A lot of people are taking advantage of online services or satellite, which do not generate any franchise fees. So we've seen a dip in those because of the changes in technology. Building permit revenues are all over the board. You can blame Bill Belknap's department for that. Just kidding. They are, they react to whatever the building trends are. And as you can see, in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, we had some fairly rocky times. We're starting to see the economy flatten out and improve, and we expect that to improve into the future. But it was a significant amount, as you can see, quite a difference over the years. Salaries, benefits and employee programs. Cost of living increased based upon averaging the monthly CPI from March nineteen, or excuse nineteen, two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and seventeen was one point three percent average. That is proposed as a CPI for two thousand and seventeen. Salary adjustments in our pay-for-performance plan and the step and grade plan for police is three point five percent for step and grade. It's a seven-step system. When you reach the top step, you are eligible for cost of living adjustments only. In our amps program, under a hundred percent of market, you're eligible for up to four percent based upon performance. If you are at a hundred percent or above, you are also able to participate, but it's at a much smaller percentage. We have a wellness program, a robust wellness program. We have a health plan that is finally starting to yield some fairly good numbers. We've seen in the remote past increases as high as thirteen to twenty percent. We think we have a, at least a, an interim solution to that, or at least we've held it at bay. The increase this year is five point eight percent. We have a voluntary employee benefit allocation or account for employees at three dollars and fi, or three hundred and fifty dollars, excuse me, I'm trying to get through this fairly quickly. That three hundred and fifty dollars per employee allows employees to offset the costs of deductibles or other healthcare costs, or they can bank them for retirement. We also have a robust employee recognition program. Personnel changes, we have just a few of them. We have an administrative support specialist, which is proposed in the fire department. This is a way for us to continue the volunteer nature of our volunteer cadre. The idea is that we have paramedics, we have EMTs who respond to emergencies in the city. They're, they're volunteers. We'd like to get the paperwork off of them. They have a lot of records they need to keep. Also, somebody needs to order supplies for the ambulance, needs to inspect the ambulance, maintain the ambulance, those sorts of things. This is intended to allow our volunteer people to utilize their time for the volunteer services that they render and not in bookkeeping. Increased seasonal support for parks and rec winter operations. I think it's pretty clear that this last year, it was a little bit out of sorts, but there was a expectation of the public that they wanted to have a little higher frequency of snow removal from sidewalks and public areas. This is, allows for the increase for that, and it is a part-time seasonal position, so it's not full-time. Community development intern, we've got a robust intern program. It's not highly expensive, but it's up here because it is an additional part-time position. Community events division, this is the old seasonal nine-month farmer's market manager, as well as community events manager, has been rolled into a single position, and you'll see farmer's market slash community, I think it's community events slash farmer's market department developed. So it takes that nine-month position to one FTE full-time equivalent. General fund highlights, streets fund, parks and rec fund. We support, general fund supports the street fund through allocations to the fleet fund. A hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year goes directly from the general fund into the fleet fund. Cultural and recreation fund, that is what we indicated, has combined the parks and rec revenues with arts and community events. We also have the Moscow School District Community Playfields Fund, that the cost of maintenance of those playfields is split with School District two-eighty-one. Nineteen-twelve fund pays for the contract with Heart of the Arts and the utilities for the nineteen-twelve. Fleet fund, as we indicated, emergency service vehicles, meaning fire trucks, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this budget has been allocated for accumulation for that fire truck. We will, by the way, be looking into the potential for applying for a community development block grant for fire truck funding. Want to thank Walter for helping us with that. We've been looking into that, and we will try and determine if that's possible. If so, then it will be paid for with state grant funding. That is a competitive grant, so we're not getting our hopes up, but we sure hope we'll be able to, to do that. If so, it will allow us to stretch those tax dollars farther. Okay, professional services, advertising and publishing. So we start looking at how these MCAs are dealing with those, but they're related to potential capital bond issues. So you'll find expenses in these different areas. Airport development, we are, we've just made the third five-hundred-thousand-dollar commitment that the council made through their resolution. So we, council committed two point five million dollars over five fiscal years. We were able to fund the first year of that within the general fund. Since that time, we've utilized interfund borrowing as well as using that foregone amount that I reported on earlier, two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars per year. So we are moving that ahead as well. That commitment should be finalized within eight years. So, moving ahead, special revenue funds. These are the special revenue fund, streets, community playfields, nineteen-twelve and the transit center. And special revenue just means that they are supported through revenues other than taxes, although they do have support of taxes within there. So you've got your street fund revenue, you can see where that's gone. It's gone up a lot. Two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen was because of the increased gas tax authorized by the state legislature, as well as increased funding from the general fund to the street department. Street fund revenues, you can see on a steady end client, they were fairly flat here, as I indicated. They were being funded at approximately three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars per year. The last three years, we've gone up from that significantly, seven hundred thousand in FY seventeen, and eight hundred and seventy-two thousand proposed in FY two thousand and eighteen. So these are some of the highlights. As you can see, we've got storm main replacement, downtown streetscape, sidewalk, keeping that program going, wayfinding size, signage, pavement management, again, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, mountain road STP, urban project of twenty thousand. We have proposed funding for the Third Street Multimodal Bridge Construction estimated at five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which has been funded through a transfer of general fund capital accumulation back into the street fund. That's also included in the budget. Just wanted to take this opportunity to say, I know there have been some misinformation out there, misperception that the Third Street Multimodal Bridge was part of the bond issue. It has never been, council has never directed that that would be part of the bond issue. It's being proposed to be funded from general fund accumulations in the capital fund. So that is the source of that funding. Moscow School District Community Playfields Funds, sixteen was the first year that we, it was actually in operation. So we're continuing to kind of feel out how that's done. There are some issues, ADA issues that we're dealing with. In fact, the Parks Department, I believe, is putting in a concrete pad and some walkways in order to make those brand-new fields even more accessible to the mobility challenged in our city. Nineteen-twelve center, we talked about that a few moments ago, and the transit center, the ITC Intermodal Transit Center located on Railroad Street and Sweet Avenue. That facility was funded with grants, participation from the city, and it is on a piece of land that is owned by the University of Idaho. The city owns the building, and the tenants in the building are Smart Transit, as well as the university transportation and parking services. So there is an issue that we have to deal with in the very near future, and that is the sidewalks. The sidewalks over there were not great to begin with, a couple of winters, and they spalled very badly. We attempted to address that with an overlay. The overlay did not take, so the only alternative, according to our engineers, is they need to be demoed and removed and start over. So that's about a fifty thousand dollar program. Culture and Recreation Funds, again, these are the three separate funds underneath that. We've combined these funds for revenues. We'll talk about revenues and expenditures. You can see the trends up here. And some of these areas here are because of capital projects that went on. We're accounting for those in a little different way, so you might see some spikes as we go into our long-range financial plan. Hopefully, and we get our, our financial programs even more tuned in, that you won't see those spikes. Let's see, okay. This is the pool. As you can see, the revenues and expenditures. Pool expenses are in the blue, revenues are in the orange. So we're getting closer. We proposed a balanced revenue and expenditure, depending on the year. If it's a year that's cold, revenues are not very high. If it's a year that, that's hot, revenues may be high, but you're also going to have very high expenses. So they tend to balance each other out. Parks and rec highlights, we talked a little bit about the Hamilton Fund. What the idea is, is to provide for children-age playgrounds in the parks to promote development and development of those undeveloped parks at this time in the FY two thousand and eighteen budget. You'll see a transfer proposed of two hundred and five thousand dollars in Hamilton funds, which will be utilized for Indian Hills Playground, excuse me, Indian Hills Playground is currently being funded in this fiscal year. Council authorized that, I believe it was a hundred and forty thousand, if my memory serves. The two hundred and five thousand is for Milton Arthur Park and, tell me how, do I, Atani Park. So that'll make, hopefully, three previously undeveloped parks usable, at least on a incremental basis within the next year. So that's a big kudos to Parks and Rec and to the council for utilizing those funds for that purpose. Then we have the community playfields funds. Again, it's only been in, been in place for one year, so we're still feeling our way through the expenses on that. The arts fund has decreased a little bit. The reason it's decreased is because there is some grant funding in there. We had proposed a full-time market manager in the arts department. We were hoping to get a grant for that. That grant was unsuccessful. Now we split it out, arts and community events, so you'll see a much more realistic amount in the arts fund. This is the progress of the one percent for public arts. As you can see, and this is the, what that, those funds have been spent on, you can see they were maintained till Helioterra was promoted and constructed, dropped down, and it's been building up. This is pursuant to the council's one percent for arts ordinance. That increases the arts fund, public art fund by one percent for public projects financed by the city. Arts highlights, we've refocused the department, the arts director, part-time arts assistant, part of the arts assistant. part of the arts assistant, time has been allocated to farmer's market and community events. So, community public art, they've got the library installation for public art this next year as well. Community Events Highlights, as you can see, consolidates management and accountability, full-time market, community events manager, and does coordination. For these are the ones we've identified at this point. As the mayor knows, there are requests all the time for additional community events, and we want to make sure that those are focused and we're able to account for those in a performance-based way. Enterprise Funds, water, water capital, sewer, sewer capital, sanitation, sanitation capital, these are business funds. So as you can see, the council's always been, and the residents are interested in, where does the city of Moscow's rates? Water's down here, next up is sewer, and the top one is sanitation. How do they compare to our surrounding communities? As has been pointed out many times, when you have a city the size of Moscow, you can spread those costs out over more utility payers. If you take the per capita, and therefore rate costs in a city the size of Troy, and you have a major sewer or well renovation, those rates are up as well. So you're kind of mixing apples and oranges here, but again, it's good information. Water, water capital, this is how it's done, 6.3% is proposed for 2018 as a rate adjustment that was done pursuant to the 2013 rate study. That study was commenced using FCS out of Seattle. We had a committee of citizens, business people, we had a council member on it as well, to go through our capital plans, our operational plans, so on and so forth, to take a look at what a rate was necessary in order to finance those. Some of the big things we've had happening, loan from the Department of Environmental Quality, drilling of well number 10, the well number 10 water main project will also occur in 2017, and as it indicates here, Phase 2 of well 10 project will be constructed in FY2018 and is funded there. We also have the booster station improvements that were moved forward in order to address pressure issues, as well as fire flow issues, and capacity throughout the city has been a big project, and it's taking a lot of water and water capital to move that ahead. Sewer, happy to say that our wastewater treatment plant is performing admirably. We continue to deal with the issues of temperature. Lessen His People are continuing to do studies regarding the EPA and DEQ regulation of temperature. Those continue to be studied, and there may well be renovations coming down the road that need to be funded, but as right now, until those studies are complete, we're unable to tell you exactly what those are. As you can see, there's transfers going on to fund the comprehensive sewer system plan, wastewater treatment plant master plan. As this talks about the trunk line phase improvements, of which the work on Sixth Street to Line Street was also included earlier in the summer, just got Sixth Street paved and opened on Friday afternoon. So next year, there'll be another chunk that's going to be done. So that's huge. As Lessen, or as I just indicated, those improvements will occur, have occurred, Sixth Street to College Street in FY17. Sanitation, sanitation capital, I'm happy to say that the rate study committee looked at this in 2016, and a 0% rate increase was, was recommended. Part of that, and really, the benefits of that are that with the roll cart program, with the curbside recycling, not curbside, what's it called?
Single stream.
Single stream, sorry, thank you guys. Single stream recycling, that has been done with very little increase. And with accumulation of funding, those rates are really doing well to keep pace with the services, so no increase at this time. There is an increase in tipping fees at the solid waste processing facility, and that's in order to keep pace with our transport contract, and we amended disposal agreements with Leita County and the neighboring cities, mainly because in the rate study, they looked at collections within the city versus disposal rates, and we were out of whack. Collections was, in fact, subsidizing disposal. We've got, brought that back into balance this year, and it'll take another couple of years to get it done, but we're moving that ahead. These are some of the proposed projects. Expansion relocation of the recycling center, we are moving forward with strategic planning and a comprehensive plan for sanitation, which we've never done, will be pursued in 2018. Miscellaneous Funds, fleet information systems and debt service, these are just some of the things that were acquired in 2017. These are some of the things that we're accumulating money for. So we're moving forward with these purchases as necessary, as I indicated. The department that utilizes the particular asset is allocated with paying for that asset, whether they are general fund, enterprise fund, internal service fund. Debt service fund, as I indicated, that's where we receive the revenues on the $10 million proposed bond issue, and where we also pay the debt service on that. That's where you will find the debt service for the Hamilton Low Aquatic Center remaining debt. LID debt service fund, there is no outstanding debt. And LID construction, we continue to move forward with promoting gravel street paving program, sidewalk program, and then any other programs if there is any additional funding. Capital projects, just very quickly, if you look at all of these capital projects in FY18, playground equipment, Third Street multimodal bridge, pavement maintenance, which, by the way, was funded in street operations up until this year. It got to be a significant enough number that we felt more comfortable utilizing the capital accounts, so that's why it's been moved. That line item has been moved from operations into capital. White Avenue underpass project, which you will hear about tonight, Sixth Street safety improvement, storm main replacement, so on and so forth. And these continuing programs and programs that continue to be accumulated. Okay? These are where we're accumulating any capital monies that we have. I won't go into each of those. The list is very close to the list that you just saw. So where the money comes from, revenue by source. So you look here, you've got property tax, which accounts for about 7.3% of our entire budget, so on and so forth. Charges for services in the enterprise funds are huge, for building permit fees, so on and so forth. We've got fund balance, which is accumulated funding, that is accumulated for projects, any balance that is left in the funds, capital transfers from the operating funds into the capital accounts, operating transfers. We have a small water loan, 0.29%. So as you can see, there are a lot of areas where we get some funding. Some of it's not very much, but we aggregate all of that into the funding for the budget. Where does the money go? This is just the corollary to the last slide, and you start looking at the different costs. Enterprise funds capital outlay by far is the largest outlay of funding that we have. We also have general government, public safety, so you can go through here and see where those funds are going. Debt service includes not only the debt service fund, that also is debt service for the sewer revenue bonds that are outstanding as well. So with that, I will take a drink of water, and you can ask many questions I might be able to answer.
Gary, thank you for hammering through that. Ladies and gentlemen, that's what you just witnessed, is things that we hammered over a number of months, and as council has seen every one of these documentations in detail that we've worked through. And thank you for the great example there, Gary, so folks out there in the audience can see just exactly how it goes, because it's a process that this council and I myself take extremely seriously about what we do and how we do it, and where the funds come from, and building of the infrastructure, moving our city forward, because we need to do that. If we don't do that, somebody down the road will really have an issue with it. I'll give you a quick example, I don't know who, anybody in here that might have read it or might not have seen, the situation at Lewiston is going in. Their manager that's going to be leaving that talked about as much as $100 million in infrastructure projects that they need to get completed, and it might even be more than that, they really don't know. And that's why it's important that we accumulate, we move forward with funding to get things done, and we need to chip away every single year as we're going along. If we don't, down the road, we will be in a, in a position where it'll be problematic for our city. Questions for Gary before I open the public hearing from council?
Thank you, Gary, and I'll explain to everybody, during the public hearing process, we will let everybody have the same amount of time, which is going to be three minutes, and I ask that you please state your name and address, and tell us what concerns you may or may not have, and just be reminiscent of this, everybody in the world, adults, please be kind, everybody will be listened to. So be kind if you hear something you don't like, that's just how it goes sometimes, but we're all grown up, so we can make it happen. So with that, I will start taking testimony.
Front row.
My name is Marshall Comstock, and I live at 932 North Mountain View in Moscow. And Mr. Mayor and council, I feel real good about being here tonight and speaking a little bit to you about the budget. I came tonight to show general support of the 2018 budget. I think that the staff did an excellent job looking at our city needs and the council goals, and goals of previous councils, and previous mayors, and all the things that go along with the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan. There's a couple of specifics tonight that I would like to showcase a little bit. One of them is I would like to show support for the funding of the Third Street multimodal bridge. This is a project that I really feel should have happened 15 or 20 years ago. When you look at the approaches to the bridge, when there was some reconstruction done along the creek, they also, about 20 years ago, redid those approaches in preparation for a multimodal bridge over that. We look at the way the city is growing now. Most of our city is growing towards the east and towards the north, and everybody's accessing Mountain View Road. When they hit Mountain View Road, their choices of how they're going to get across town are limited. Right now, we look at White Avenue, we look at Sixth Street, look at B Street, look at D Street, look at F Street, but there's over a third of a mile distance between Sixth Street and Third Street, or Sixth Street and B Street. Right in the middle of that lays Third Street. And with the growth of our city and our traffic demands getting across town now, I think it's about time that we open that, that bridge up to multimodal transportation and spread that traffic around and through our city, and so that we're not focusing all of the traffic on Sixth Street, B Street, and D Street. One of the things, too, that, that we really should look at is public safety and convenience for, of our, of our traffic and our pedestrians. It's tough for a kid to have to go clear down to Sixth Street or, or B Street to get somewhere in the middle there, Saylene Whitmore School. What if there was an emergency call, and they had to get across town quicker? It gives another avenue of safety for our police and fire and ambulance. Another area of the budget that I'd like to show support for tonight, I was very grateful to see there, there was some small funding moving on towards the Mountain View Road project. That was a project that started over 25 years ago, about reconstruction, filling in ditches, doing sidewalks, making the road much safer. I noticed that there was a small amount of money in it this year, and that there was more funding proposed for the next through, couple of years, through city funding and through grants. So I was very happy to see some of that. I'm in support of the proposed bond, even though it is not specific for any purpose right now. I have faith in the council that, that you will meet the needs of the, of the city and the strategic plan with that, and so I'm happy to see that move forward.
Marshall, I'm going to have to cut you off.
One last thing. One concern I have is that in the same year that we had a full 3% property tax increase, we're trying to go out for a bond, I really feel that perhaps the sewer and water increase in rates maybe be put off or, or lessened, so.
Thank you, Marshall.
Thank you for your time.
One thing I'll point out, too, that 3% increase in property rates that we looked at this year, that money is going to go right into streets. $100, next, or $157,000, $158,000, that's what we looked at, so. Thank you, Marshall.
Victoria Seaver, 121 North Lilly, Moscow. So how do we come to a reasonable consensus for a balanced budget? I believe in the strength of diversity with its multi-layered insights and decisions. Strategically, this includes input from the field. Everything from wastewater treatment to spreadsheets to website transparency, from our police, legal, and shops, from planning development and commissions, from grounds to staffing, and the list goes on. I see how we're working with planning tiers for major challenge areas. The city refers to a citizen survey and compares trends, listens to public hearings and public comments, attends and offers workshops and presentations, and communicates one-on-one with members of the community. We have the opportunity to avail ourselves of these venues at multiple levels. The council distills it all as a partner for economic prosperity and community values. It's a big job. It takes open ears, foresight, and good counting fingers from the whole team. I'm satisfied with the proposed budget. That also applies to the proposed bond we'll vote on in May. I do reserve the option to challenge points as we go, but aging infrastructure must be managed, essential services must be supported and updated, and dedicated and skilled workers must be valued through wages and the working resources they need to do the job. Water isn't as plentiful as we have a habit of thinking it is. The aquifer is declining while people in enterprise make more demands on it. For starters, we have to treat it right and maintain its conveyance systems. Gratefully, our city workers, through their initiative, are creatively using and repairing the city fleet to increase their lifespan, securing grants to significantly extend available funds, and initiating cost savings, such as lessening solid waste through single-stream collection and promoting zero-scaping. Our volunteer fire crews save us insurance costs. We need those fire trucks to meet those criteria, not to mention saving property and lives. Those are just a few examples for the budget and the bond. I would add, now that we're spending out the Hamilton Funds, I'm thrilled we're using the remainder to get basic playgrounds and access for our many undeveloped parks. I absolutely support green spaces. So let's take this budget and run with it, and we charge you to leverage it for the best results we can get together. I thank everyone working for and with the city for their efforts.
Thank you, Victoria. Oh, by the way, ladies and gentlemen, that $10 million bond that we've been talking about, there's going to be all kinds of public input with that as we go along. When we get it identified, and what we're going to use that money for, there is going to be a lot of community involvement in it. So we'll have a number of different events that will happen with that, so.
Good evening, Kenton Byrd, 517 East B Street. Mayor and council members, thank you for your service. I know and appreciate the time that you spend on city business, especially in preparation for this budget hearing. I'd like to make two brief comments about the budget. First, I am concerned about the proposed $10 million bond issue. In particular, I oppose the city's decision to proceed with a new police station and/or the lease purchase of the federal building unless and until the council resumes conversations with Leita County about a joint law enforcement center. Some of you in this room, including several in the front row here, remember extended discussions with the county more than a decade ago about providing a shared facility for the Moscow Police Department and Leita County Sheriff's Office. Those negotiations stalled for reasons that were never clear to the public. It's now time to revive them. We have a new sheriff, a new police chief, new commissioners, and almost an entirely different city council. I urge you to work with your counterparts up the hill to come to a plan that meets both agencies' needs. As you saw in the pie chart earlier, Moscow taxpayers are also Leita County taxpayers. Our elected officials should work together to be sure that tax money is spent efficiently. A new police station should go hand-in-hand with a new sheriff's office, jail, and law enforcement dispatch center. Second, I know others will speak tonight about including money in this budget for the Third Street Vehicle Bridge. Calling it a multimodal bridge does not change the fact that this bridge, if it were built, would undercut the main east-west corridor for bicyclists, which I use regularly. I oppose putting money for the bridge in this budget. Thanks for your attention. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you, Kenton. Oh, by the way, I was on council 10 years ago when we talked with the county, and the county was the ones that chopped us off, Kenton, because I was the president of the council at that time. We were very much interested, and they cut us off. So if that, so there you have it. Well, three different guys, you're absolutely correct.
Hi. My name is Randy Rousch. I live at 5 through 6 off Mountain View Road, which is the intersection of Sixth and Mountain View. So on a day-to-day basis, I look at the cluster of traffic every day. When I first moved there in 95, Sixth Street did not go on through. And we negotiated with the city, the developer, and myself, come up with a plan where we traded some land. I mean, this was nothing to me, but I was glad to do it for the greater good, to let Sixth Street come straight on across instead of meandering in the intersection. Now, I think everybody needs to put some of their personal, not my backyard feelings aside and put the Third Street Bridge in, you know, for the fact that there's going to be another development east of Mountain View, as well as just the convenience of getting on through. It's, to drive around that area forever has been kind of ridiculous. Anyway, that's my soapbox.
Thank you, Randy.
Nels Reese, 308 South Hayes. You probably wonder why I'm coming to this meeting tonight. I'm your memory. As I turn 80, that's all I've got left, is memory. Chances that I'm going to beat somebody up in the ring are pretty limited. I want to remind you of your comprehensive plan. Just want to read a couple lines from it. These are things you all, we've all done this before. "Special areas of the community character are going to be protected." It says, "Objectives: Protect existing neighborhood identity and character." Now, you can tear the sheet out of your comp plan, and in my mind, if you decide to do the Third Street Bridge, probably you should tear it out. We only have one historic neighborhood, really. It's not a better neighborhood than the folks on Comstock and the folks over in Indian Hills, and all those are wonderful neighborhoods. If those folks had 500 cars driving down their street, they would be, they would go ballistic. We, Third Street, Sixth Street, D Street, we all have 5, 6, 7,000 cars a day. We know about traffic. We have them. Preserve and enhance special areas of the community to celebrate the community's identity and character. Just think about it. I mean, I should probably just tear it out right now, but I won't, because this is my copy of the comp plan. Number two, I'd like to just mention to you that we've been talking about this for a long time, and in 2007, the council chose not to do this. I realize that we're growing, and it's going to, things are going to change. What I want to let you know is that we have 380 people signed up against the bridge, 380 people, not all living on Third Street, of course. There's only about 30 or 40 of us living on Third Street, so we will, we can provide these to you tonight. Secondly, I just want to think about the identity in this comp plan of collectors and arterials. We had a discussion the other night at P&amp;Z, and Les seems to have trouble telling the difference between a collector and a arterial. I doubt that you have that same problem. I think we all kind of know what it is. And we know that all these streets going through our neighborhood here are collectors. They're big collectors.
Nels, again, I have to wrap it up. Your time is about up.
Okay. So I just wanted to let you know that I think this is a wonderful budget. Gosh, you've worked hard on it, and I compliment you on it. It's impressive. Not one little part that, if there wasn't 15,000 or 17,000 cars looking down Third Street, it would be a different issue. Think about that tonight.
Thank you, Nels.
See you later.
I live at 318 South Cleveland. I want to just say thanks for funding the bridge. I moved there in 2001, and, you know, I grew up in Moscow, and Hodges, Larry Hodges should have built that bridge when they built that subdivision in the first place, and I'm not going to lay it on Scott while he's here, so. But it does take the pressure off the other neighborhoods, and one of the, one of the unique things about it that I have personally had trouble with is, in emergency response, that there are, it's the same address block on both sides of the creek, so that, that kind of makes things inconvenient when we've got resident firefighters that rotate through and don't know the features of the city like that. So having that bridge would help a lot as far as emergency responses. And plus, I'd only have to, you know, make one turnoff to get to Mountain View to go to work, so that'd be nice, too. And also, thanks for increasing that street repair budget. That's been a long time coming. I hope the new motor user tax is helping soften the blow a little bit. It's helped us at the Highway District with our funding, so that's nice. Thank you for funding the new fire engine. I look forward to getting to play with that when it gets here. And hopefully, we can replace all three of them in the near future, you know, because they're, they are very aged. We've actually had to, when the pump went out on the last one, they actually had to build the impeller for the pump, so that, that kind of gets inconvenient when you, when you need something for emergency response. Also, with the Fire Department, thanks for funding that administrative position for EMS. That's really going to help our volunteers out. I know personally, because, you know, every three years, we have to fill out so, so much paperwork to keep our certification in, as an EMT, and, you know, it helps increase our volunteers' ability to, you know, do what they want to do. They, they sign up to respond to calls, not to, not to do paperwork, not to work on budgets for the, for the ambulance company. So it's going to, with the other increasing professional demands on the, on the EMTs, it really helps out to have, it's going to help out to have that position. And also, I'll, I'm in favor of the $10 million bond. I think, you know, yeah, it's pretty nebulous at this point. It's been nebulous for a couple of years now, I think. But I do, I also agree with what Kenton said, though, that there is a lot of overlap with the county, and I hope that, you know, we can kind of draw them into some discussions about some of those things that we got shot down with 10 years ago, sitting there at that table, and there was a lot of hurt feelings that day, I think. Hopefully, we can move forward with them on some stuff, too. Thank you, and I hope you approve the budget as is.
Thank you, Dan. And the county are our friends, make no doubt about that, ladies and gentlemen, that we work really well with our county commissioners, and so that's a relationship that we very much enjoy, so, absolutely. Yes, sir.
I'm Tim Bartholmes at 406 South Hayes Street. Mr. Mayor and council members, I want to speak to you about my displeasure with the Third Street Vehicle Bridge. I think that Moscow is a wonderful town, and the strategic plan ends with the statement that we want to be a great place to live and work. And I think that one of the things that makes Moscow really such a wonderful place to live is that it's so walkable. And I think that Third Street is one of those main pedestrian thoroughfares. We've got Sixth Street, B Street, D Street, all of those have a lot of crosstown vehicle traffic. Third Street, which goes past Lena Whitmore, and then the high school, East City Park, our historic legacy anchor to the city's park system, goes right past our city hall, past our well-designed, walkable Main Street. Third Street is the pedestrian connector that ties all of these together and makes walking so, so nice in, here in Moscow. And so I encourage you to maintain that walkable character. If you go out on a farmer's market on Saturdays, you'll see a steady stream of families walking down towards the farmer's market, down Third Street, and then on the way back up from Main Street, carrying flats of berries, again, on Third Street. Because it's such a pleasant walk, it's a, it's a nice low-gradient walk, it's easy walking. And then on these summer weekends, like we've had recently, if you go into East City Park now, you see kids just running around in circles, learning to ride their bikes on the little hills, crossing Third Street, crossing Hayes Street, trying to get in and out of the park, trying to work safely, and running around like kids. And I think redirecting more traffic right past that core city park is, is going to put lives at risk, and is going to significantly reduce the quality of East City Park and its value to families. And so there's already significant east-west crossings. We've got Sixth Street, B Street, D Street, F Street. That we end, and now you already have the money allocated for this vehicle bridge across Third Street. So I want to encourage you to actually, to act, to make a positive, forward-looking direction to maintain the walkable character. I think that this is something that you should feel proud about maintaining this walkable nature, and, and that you will make a decision that's right for our communities and is, and maintains some of that really wonderful character that Moscow, I think, has done such a, such a good job with. So please respect that legacy of careful planning that is so clearly evident. The walkable nature of the city is one of my favorite parts about living here, and I hope that you'll maintain that and feel strongly and feel good about maintaining that character. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim. Tim hit that with three minutes and one second. I just want to share that, it was really, your timing was impeccable, sir.
Wayne Kraus, 1223 Public Avenue. Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff, it's all good to see you guys again. It's always a pleasure, or would be, except this is the first time I've been here in a long time. I really appreciate all the work that you did in the budget. Believe me, I know how dry that is, and it gets to be somewhat cumbersome, there's so many numbers, and it always interests me when somebody says, "I'm going to take that budget and go down it line item by line item and see what it works," and it, you just can't do that. So thanks to the staff for all the hard work that they put into it. I support the budget, 3%. Thanks for not taking forgone taxes, I appreciate that. I think there was a good comment that was made, perhaps next year, if we do pass a bond, is, I know, we passed the comprehensive plan, we passed the water rate study and the sewer rate studies for incremental increases every year. Perhaps it would be a good idea if we, we maybe just kind of passed over that next year, if we do have a $10 million bond that gets passed. Okay, all that being said, I do support that bond, but the one I really wanted to talk about is, let's talk about the Third Street Bridge a little bit, because that's, that seems to be the most contentious item. If you remember back, in 2012, we did a multimodal transportation study, and in that, there was a forecast of traffic volume over a variety of different streets, depending upon how that bridge would be configured. So this was in, it was forecast to the year 2035. And in 2000, they, they did it in three different manners. They did it with just a pedestrian bicycle bridge, or they did it with a complete bridge, or they did it with a full bridge with traffic calming methods put in to slow traffic down. And that would have been in that four-block area between Paradise Creek and Hayes. Here's some numbers that I find are pretty interesting, because we wonder in 2035, what would the traffic be like if we didn't put the bridge in? Well, the only way we can look at that is, they have the alternate, alternate number one, which is the pedestrian bicycle bridge. Currently, if you take a look at, let me, I have a small piece of paper here. If we look at Hayes, on the other side of Third Street, in other words, north of Third Street, currently about 3,900 vehicles. 2035, with just a bicycle pedestrian bridge, that number climbs to 4,600. If you put a multimodal bridge in with traffic calming, that number drops to 4,300. So it actually comes less. If you don't do anything, the numbers will be higher than if you put the bridge in, according to this study. If you take a look at Third Street, and my concern when I was on the council was, if we put this Third Street Bridge in, and it increases traffic so much on Third Street that when it hits that intersection at Third and Washington, that it creates so much congestion, then the state of Idaho is going to step in, because then it becomes Highway 8.
You need to wrap it up, Wayne.
Okay, real quick, then. Numbers on Third Street. Without, this is down by City Hall, and without a bridge in 2035, 5,800 vehicles. With the bridge, with calming, 5,000 vehicles. And if we take a look at east of Third Street, I'm sorry, east of Hayes, that number does climb. So the bottom line is this. If you put a, if you don't put a bridge in, or if you put just a pedestrian bicycle bridge in, those vehicle numbers are actually going to increase on Third Street and Hayes. If you put a multi-vehicle bridge in with traffic calming, it's going to drop the numbers down. And always remember this, when you make a decision that's going to affect the entire community, make the best decision for the entire community.
Thanks, Wayne.
Joanne Manita, I live 203 South Howard. I'm affected by the smoke, so I hope you can hear me. It seems such a shame to me that you've put in all this work on your beautiful budget, and it's so detailed, and now we're having the discussion about the Third Street Bridge. We were coming, the members of the Citizens for a Liveable Community have been coming week after week after week, and you said, oh, the mayor and some of you said, "We'll discuss it later." I didn't think this was going to be later. And as far as transparency of your budget, on the city website, there's just the summary. And I looked and looked and looked to see, because I heard that the Third Street Bridge was going to be part of the bond issue, couldn't find it anywhere. So finally, I called up, and they said, "Well, come down, that's just the summary, you have to look at the full budget." So I questioned the transparency of someone having to come down here and get, get Lori to lug it out, get Art to help me find the right page. It's on page 336. The other summary ended at 287. You could put 100 more pages, and you should put 100 more pages, and you shouldn't pass this budget until the whole budget is on the city website, so people can look at it. Okay, so I found the Third Street Bridge, and then I went into shock, because it says, "The city council goal for citizen-led and funded initiative to design and construct the Third Street Multimodal Bridge." What says I citizen-led? We've been, 400 of us are objecting to it. And I looked at the numbers, and then I went home, and I realized that you have put $15,000, $15,085, that was, 6,000 of which were donated by citizens precisely to put in a pedestrian-only bridge and not a multimodal bridge. And now you're taking their money, without notifying them, because some of them are here, you're taking their money and putting it into a vehicle bridge, which was what they wanted to avoid, and was also part of the 2007-30 resolution of the city, that a motor bridge over Paradise Creek at Third Street would lead to unmitigable trade-offs, and approving instead the construction of a pedestrian bicycle bridge. And, oh, Wayne's left already. If you read that study, I think, not looking ahead at 2035, but looking right away, when that bridge opens, there are going to be 2,000 cars more going past Lena Whitmore, the people who want to save two minutes to get to the one side of town to the other. If your goal is really safety and a great place to live and work, then what you're doing in approving this budget...
Joanne, you need to wrap it up, too, please.
I will.
Thank you.
What you're doing in this budget is undercutting both of those goals. It won't be safe, there'll be too much traffic, and the traffic's going past schools. It won't be a great place to live and work, because you're going to lose your beautiful core of Moscow that you're bragging about all the time, and that makes people want to live here. And what will you be gaining? You'll be gaining two minutes of time for people who want to get across town, and you will be increasing, increasing the congestion. be increasing, increasing the congestion at Third and Main. That makes people like me not wanna even try to go down that street. Thank you, and let's, I oppose passing this with just one reading unless it's further discussion. Thank you.
A couple of things, ladies and gentlemen. I don't know what that number is on a pedestrian bridge, 6,000 and some odd dollars, I thought it was $7,600, Gary.
Something like that.
But rest assured, those folks that donated that money for that bridge will get it back. Simple as that. We've got a list of those names, do we not?
Yes, it's not included in the $580,000 that is proposed.
Okay, so it's not part of that, Joanne, and, well, anyway, that's the direction we're headed. And I wanted to make one other comment, and you're absolutely right. On August the 15th of last year, you folks were in here, and you were in here a number of times. If I recall, it was either six or seven council sessions that we saw all kinds of things, the council up here, and one of them, of course, everybody in this room agrees we need some kind of a bridge, there's no dispute about that, and with your very own group, of course, you showed us the safety issues, the kids down in that creek on bikes, pallets being thrown in there. So this council up there took that very seriously, the safety issues of that as well. So I just wanted to throw that. Now, hi, Margaret, I'll let you go. It's Margaret Stern.
Margaret Deville, 1131 Jack Shaw Road. I'm a member of the Moscow Pathways Commission, and I'm not here to speak for the Pathways Commission, because the Pathways Commission a year ago wrote a letter supporting a pedestrian bicycle bridge and opposing a motorized vehicle, i.e. cars and trucks, bridge across Paradise Creek at Third Street. So I just want to remind you all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret only used 18 seconds. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Ball. I'm the president of Citizens for a Livable Community, and I wanna take a minute to make it clear that even though many of us that are speaking tonight, oh, I'm sorry, I live at 601 East Third Street, to make it clear that even though many of us that are speaking tonight are part of the neighborhood that will be affected by a Third Street multimodal bridge, that we do have signatures from, like Mr. Reese said, about 300 signatures from citizens all over our community. This is an issue that, to refute what some of the supporters of this bridge have said, this is not just about not wanting more traffic in our own backyard, it's a fundamental disagreement about what makes a city a great place to live, whether it's about prioritizing traffic flow, or whether it's about prioritizing neighborhoods and walkability and the safety of schoolchildren. It's not about our own self-interest, and if I did not live on Third Street, I would be just as passionate about this issue. And it was my daughter who spoke to you earlier, and I want to make it clear that I didn't tell her to talk, I didn't, to you, I didn't, I encouraged her to, but she came to me and asked, "Mom, what are you working on?" And I told her about the bridge, and she said, "That's a terrible idea, there's already too many cars, what can I do about it?" And I told her, "Come tell the city council what you think." And to use just my last minutes, I wanna quote what was on your website. It said, "The city council goal for citizen-led funded initiative to design and construct the 13th Street multimodal bridge, from outside sources, $15,085," which is the amount that has been collected for a pedestrian-only bridge over Third Street. So I really encourage, and that's directly from the budget, so I encourage you to please look into that, because that is not how those funds were intended to be used.
Thank you, Amy. Gary, would you take note of that, this lady said?
I would note that, as indicated, about 78 or 7900 is the result of donations. The balance of that $15,000 is city funding that was allocated for testing and design.
Okay.
So.
Okay, come on up, whoever's next. Hello, Tim.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Tim Thompson, I live at 602 South Adams Street, and for full disclosure, that's the corner of Adams and Sixth Street, so I figure that's your main. Anyhow, Mayor, as a former chief executive officer of a port authority who is involved in road projects, most road planners will say-
Hang on a second, Tim. We've got some testimony going here, please, ladies back there. Okay, now you can start back over, Tim, thank you.
Sorry. For roads to be effective and to meet transportation planning objectives, the best roads are those that connect, and I believe that by completing the, therefore I support the budget as proposed by your staff that includes the Third Street multimodal bridge construction project, because by doing so, you will connect major arteries of the city, and I do believe that the city as a whole will benefit for completing this project. Thank you.
Good evening, Senate Council. I am Becker Gooch, I live at 234 South Roosevelt in Mosquado. And I have a couple, I have three points that I just would like to cover. My first point is, in listening to the presentation tonight, is how is the bond issue going to be affected by the school planning to have a bond issue, well, at the same time? Are we going to be, are the two bond issues going to be competing against each other? Are they, what is, is the timeframe differently?
We're not gonna talk about a school bond, because I haven't talked to the superintendent. This is a separate bond issue.
Right, I know, it's a separate bond issue, but will they be competing?
When that bond issue comes up, there's gonna be a bunch of different public meetings that we're gonna be discussing what is gonna go on with that.
Right, but will we be competing with the school district?
No, they don't have any plans for that, no.
Okay, 'cause I know they're planning a bond issue as well. The second thing is, I noticed that the presentation had the tax-exempt properties that are directly affecting our budget, and the one thing I did see that wasn't on that tax-exempt area was churches around town and private schools, and I think that would be good for us to know exactly how that also impacts the budget and the lack of taxpayer dollars, and I don't think that can be answered tonight, but I just think that's a really important component of that tax-exempt area. The third thing I would like to speak on is the Third Street Bridge, of course, I've been here before, you before, and we could not have all the people sign the petitions, and actually, the number now is 480 signatures of people that couldn't pack this room, who are against this traffic bridge being put in, but do support the pedestrian crossing. And I think that's a significant number, and should speak to the city council as to how contentious this is, and how much the community is going to be affected, and how much the community is against bringing heavy traffic through our city, our core. And that core also includes heavy truck traffic, and that is just going to increase if that's opened up, and it's, they don't drive slow, and they don't drive quiet, and it's not a safe avenue. And I am a part of the people that did donate to this project, for the pedestrian crossing only, and it kinda bothers me that the city council is using this, those fundings and saying it's a citizen-led initiative to put in the traffic bridge, when I think in reality that is not the true facts. So I'd like to see that amended, and also, I would like to see the city really reconsider this as part of this budget issue, or have more hearings about it, because it's a bigger issue than just a one-time public hearing. And thank you for listening.
I'm Paul Manita, I live on 203 South Howard. I'd like to bring out another very important factor which is going to take place when you have a lot of new traffic come through, and one is that the people who live in those houses are going to start losing their value, because this is an area where you have full families living there, with kids and young kids, and a lot of the younger people. And when you put all of these cars through this area, people with kids are not gonna go there. In fact, they're gonna start leaving that area. And what's gonna happen then is, if you take a look at the Third Street from Polk Street toward the highway, toward the town, you can see what's gonna happen to the houses and the people who are living in this particular area, and it's not going to be nice at all. And this is going to be, go further in the standpoint that you have, people live in that area because there's a good school. But when you have these cars moving through these areas, the people with children are not going to want to go live in an area where you have this many cars going through, and it's, it's going to affect that whole area. And if you wanna take a look at what the possibilities are, go back down toward the university, in that university town part, and you can see that it's not going to be nice at all. So I think people who live in this particular area would, should be very careful about supporting this group of people who want to put a lot more, a lot more cars through this area, because it's not going to be good, and it's going to be much more dangerous for people with kids, and especially with people who are using the really nice part that we have, it's going to be much more dangerous for them. So I think you need to be very careful about what the long-term effects of this increase in traffic that you're going to have, and not go through to put the bridge through this area. Thank you.
Gretchen Stewart, 411 South Hayes Street in Moscow. I'm gonna put a footnote first, and that is a footnote about emergency vehicles. I could imagine if you had a non-vehicular bridge, and it was wide enough for bicyclists, handicap users, and pedestrians, it might, you could maybe make the measurements big enough to allow emergency vehicles to get through. So that's kinda moot in my, I mean, that could be a compromise if needed, if emergency needs to go there. I found it ironic that on that page, 333 of the 356 budget, that I found only in person down here today, 'cause I did search online, and I was shocked that there were no figures for this hearing tonight, online. I could not believe it. It was incredulous. But anyway, on that page, there's this, you know, the item, 477049, Third Street Pedestrian Bridge. Yeah, we get $595,085 for a pedestrian bridge, thank you very much. No, I know that's just ironic, but if it had been available online, we could have pointed out this little mistake, or big mistake. And then, the thing I pointed out earlier about insufficient public information and community engagement, well, you know, Mr. Redener stood here and said he was gonna present this slideshow so that the public can be informed. Well, I think it's a little late.
Well, we had a public workshop.
I know, in the middle of the summer, I was gone, a lot of people are gone, this town empties out, and we had, excuse me, I would like my time.
You're gonna get your time.
Good.
Don't worry, I can give you plenty of time here. I'm gonna give you three minutes, but there was plenty of notice on this, and it always happens-
On what?
It always happens year over year in July, no different than any of you.
Well, I'm sorry. I get the newspaper, and you all don't issue press releases about your budget. I've been, I grew up in a town where they printed the budget in the newspaper. And if you put the, I was told today that the summary, you know, that's on there, but the budget is really a little too complicated for most people. Give me a break, we can read figures. We would've known, all right. So you can't rely on one newspaper reporter to be giving information to the public, is my, okay. I'm a former teacher and a very good student, I do my homework ahead of time, I prepare for class, I would like to have been able to prepare for this. I was out of town for 12 days till last night, and by the way, I was in Portland. Now, you talk about leading by example, that was a quote about this city in this presentation earlier. Yes, in some areas, Moscow does lead, but by golly, in some others, we're going backwards to old ideas. In Portland, I have the maps from where I was, they have their arterials, and those neighborhoods, nobody goes zooming through, there's an empty out and an empty out, that's what you do. You have to look further than next year and the next year, you've gotta look longer term. Where else are arterials gonna be? The areas between like D and Sixth are about as big as the suburb I was in, that was surrounded by arterials. We need to think about that, instead of trying to make an arterial, you know, be Third Street from Mountain View to Main. So anyway, I think you ought to put your budget online always, not just the past years. I am against spending the $595,000 on a bridge that will provide a shortcut to the trucks going through to the landfill and other places east of Moscow, and they'll enjoy the quiet enjoyment and safety of an established neighborhood that was built when there were horse and buggies. A capital project of this size that would fundamentally change the character of the town should not be undertaken in this manner.
Did I give you an extra minute? Your time's up.
You did?
Yes.
Okay, well, I will finish up. And so, you can use part of that $595,000 to do a great pedestrian bridge, use the extra to plug into sidewalks, like you are doing in some places. That's great, we need them so badly, so badly. I want to read one quote in closing, and I hope you all had this, I'm gonna pass out this brochure. Quote, "Excessive traffic volume on residential streets, especially where neither the origin nor the destination of that traffic lies within the neighborhood, is undesirable because it is a danger to life, limb, and property," and so forth. Speed and number of cars, you've been put on notice that, just look up-
Thank you, thank you, Bridgette.
Just Google New York, Brooklyn, slower speeds, and you'll see, if you haven't read the studies-
Bridgette, I'm gonna be fair to everybody, you've got more time than anybody, so please sit down, thank you. And oh, by the way, I want to make a point to the Daily News, you guys did a hell of a job in reporting that budget workshop and your act, and what you reported, so please put that in the paper. Your time is up, sir.
I was gonna finish up my three minutes, and I would say to the mayor, you need to be much more-
Please go sit down, Mr. Mayor.
Good with people here who would like to say something.
I'm being honest, well, I gave everybody plenty of time, go sit down, sir. Anybody else wanna talk?
Meeting, in your own way-
Public hearing is closed.
You should find a way to get, make it a better meeting.
Please sit down.
You should be the one who make a better meeting, not necessarily the people here.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to take a recess?
Yes, five-minute recess. Okay, we will resume our meeting, and it is 9:17. Public testimony is done, so I will turn it over to counsel. How counsel would like to proceed and discussion?
Did you announce how long the public testimony was going to go beforehand?
I asked if there was any other public testimony, and nobody showed up, so I cut it off. So that's why I said, public hearing is closed, so we are moving forward. How will counsel like to go with this?
In lieu of the testimony, I would like to move to consider the ordinance on first reading and let it be read by title. And I don't know how to do this exactly, but you know how you can read it, you have three separate readings, so we have three meetings so that this issue can be discussed and heard again. But I don't know how to say it.
Counsel has the authority to, as stated in the action, you can either pass it under, waiver the rules requiring three complete and separate readings. You can consider it on first reading.
Mm-hmm.
Then it would go to second reading. At that point, the counsel could again waive the third reading and implement the ordinance, or they could take it to a third reading. And at that point, they would vote on approval or denial of the ordinance.
Okay, so I'm going to move to have the ordinance read on first reading by title and summary. What's the rest?
It's sufficient to ask or put your motion forward. It says that you consider the ordinance on first reading.
Okay, please consider the ordinance on first reading.
Catherine, your motion, nice for lack of a second.
Well, we're here considering an ordinance for the budget, and so I'd rather cover the larger portion of the budget and determine which way we're going to go with that before we delve into the issue of most controversy tonight. So from my point of view, the budget at large stands as is and is well-constructed and addresses the issues in the major challenge areas that are concerning Moscow. And I think from my point of view, it's in good shape as is and should move forward. Perhaps we could have a little more chat about our one contentious issue on the evening, which is the Third Street Bridge issue, and determine how we choose to move on from there.
Art, are you making the motion that we should accept the budget as written?
Not yet. I think we owe a little more discussion to the Third Street Bridge issue before we move on with that.
So when I approached the people over there and talked about the multimodal, the biggest piece that they keep talking about is that there's this increase in traffic, right? And I asked them if they had read the multimodal, also if they had really listened to what Les McDonald had said when he presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission now back in the winter of, not this past winter, but the winter prior. And there was big discussion about collectors and arterials. And if I recollect, you said that in a city our size, that that designation is not as important as what we're going to do when we do something with the street. Is that correct?
That's fairly close.
Okay.
If I may.
Please.
There is a distinction between minor arterials and collectors, and that was discussed at Planning and Zoning on a couple of occasions over the past couple of years. Generally speaking, minor arterials are carrying traffic more across town, you know, passing through areas, but across town. Collectors are on a bit smaller scale, so they don't generally go as far, and they're collecting more of the local traffic and conveying it through neighborhoods, that type of thing. So there's some distinction. But you're right, in larger communities, there's a much more distinct difference between a minor arterial or a principal arterial and collectors. And some people call them collector arterials. In a community to our size, the system is compressed because our highest-volume streets in this community are, you know, the highways, and we may see 20,000 vehicles a day versus, you know, a large community, Seattle, Portland was brought up earlier, you know, they're going to see streets that are seeing 50, 75, 100,000 vehicles a day. So they have a much broader range of volume that occurs in streets. So the distinctions between minor arterial and collectors are much less obvious in a community of our size.
There was another.
Jim. Mr. Mayor, as everybody here probably knows, I'm a big advocate of human-powered transportation and have tried to push that forward. And I think that the multimodal bridge does that. It facilitates walking down Third Street. It facilitates bicycle travel as well as motorized transport. The multimodal bridge was something that was approved by the Transportation Commission a long time ago and was part of the comprehensive plan. So I don't feel that we need to have a lot more discussion about that. I think the majority of people in the community would like to see that bridge completed. And with that, I guess I would move to approve the ordinance, the budget ordinance, under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings and read by title and published by summary.
Second.
A second. Either one.
Okay, and we'll have further discussion. Jim made a motion to approve the ordinance and the suspension of rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and it be read by title and published by summary. Gina beat you to the punch, John.
Okay.
But further discussion, Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to compliment the people that turned out tonight. I don't think Moscow's had this many people at a budget hearing in the 30 years I've been in this town. I remember when the only one to speak on the budget was Victoria. I remember when the only one to speak on the budget was myself about 20 years ago. I don't even remember what I talked about or what you talked about, but apparently it wasn't anything as contentious as this. But really, I do appreciate the turnout and the sincerity of the people that are speaking. Jim has a point. This Third Street Bridge has been discussed for a long time. This is not being sprung out of the blue that nobody's ever heard of it or talked about it. I spent a year as chairman of the Transportation Commission in 2004 looking at the Third Street Bridge. It's been asked at every single city council election forum since 2005. The Transportation Commission currently voted for it in 2015 or '16, Les?
Yeah, three times.
Three times, okay. I am not happy with myself for missing the donated money being put in the same line item as the bridge. And I missed it. Like somebody said, 400 and some pages, who can read it? Gary, and mayor and counsel, we need to, we need to make that donated money from citizens refunded if this goes through. I know part of that money is city money that was put in for source testing and other work to do with the possibility of a pit bridge. But I don't, Gary, you may want to speak to this. I don't think you really planned on that money being used to build a multimodal bridge.
Gary.
Your Honor, until this budget is approved and the council gives direction, funding within that line item remains in that line item. The estimate on the bridge was 580,000. That is the amount of money that was allocated out of general fund capital, the additional 15,000, bringing the total to 595,000. Until the council approves the project, then those funds would be refunded, or at least we would bring that back before the council to approve the refunding of those monies. Can't be done until the council gives direction on the line item.
Question?
Walter.
In that regard, Gary, so we can approve the budget as it is and subsequently down the road handle the 15,000.
As I've indicated many times, this is an appropriation ordinance. It is a policy plan of the city council. It's the operational plan for the city. The bridge itself, as it came forward, would be subject to approval of the city council, just as the contract to build the bridge would be subject to the approval of the city council. This is not the last time that the council will see this. If this project is to move forward, it will be designed, it'll, there'll be a design agreement if it's not a design-build, and then the contract to construct will also come before the city council in public meetings. So this is not the last time this will be discussed.
Mr. Mayor.
Hang on one second. I'll go to Gina.
Well, I was going to change topics a tidge. Go ahead, Walter. No, no, if you don't mind, sir.
Well, and I was going to change topics from the bridge.
All right, then let me change it first.
Okay, go ahead.
No, wait a second. Go forward, and then we'll go back.
Thank you, sir. I too, at the risk of sounding like a me-too or a placating council member at this point, want to thank you for exhibiting what I believe is what's great about Moscow. It's the passion that we all have about our community, and I appreciate you spending your valuable evenings here with us. I'd like you to do it more, please. I do believe that all 400, 500 pages, how many pages of this budget really are, it represents what is best for our community as a whole. So I really, really support this and believe that there's always going to be pieces that aren't as lovely as the others, that this is for the greater good. This is for all of the community.
Now, I'll go back to Walter.
One other item in the budget, and I will vote to approve the budget. I've talked to Gary about this, and I've made a whole lot of headway. I would like to see the proposed $10 million bond increased to 15,000 in 15 years in order to put more money towards streets. I know people are about ready to pull their hair out and scream. I saw a lady scream at a traffic guy today over the problems out on the Pullman Highway with paving work. But the condition of the streets in this community is such that we need to contend with this more summers in the future. And to do that, as Tyler Palmer would tell you, we need, we need more than a million dollars a year just to catch up and try to do some maintenance on what's falling apart. So with the exception of the fact that I would like to see that bond issue increased, I'm in favor of the budget.
Your Honor, if I may, the motion to approve the budget, we do have a revised document. It's revised because when we gave it to the, we get the estimates from Latah County, there was an issue with the L2, which was an issue with the L-2, which is the document we use to report our levy to the county. They'd not included the annexed areas of the city, so we adjusted it by, I believe, $200 more than what was before. So, in order to make it accurate with the numbers coming from the county, the size of the budget is the same, everything within the general fund is the same, just the taxes are adjusted by $200 out of 5.7 million. So, I would pass that out at this time.
So, but the total budget that was presented is accurate?
Is the same, yes.
That's the same. It's just some internal numbers that aren't quite the same.
Same, as noted in your package.
Art, did you say same?
Well, I was just going to comment a little bit about the fact that I think we're all working for the same thing. It's just that presented with the same facts, we're coming to two different sets of conclusions. I don't come to the same conclusion as the people who are opposed to the multimodal Third Street Bridge. I don't think that the results will be as they've been presented there. I think the results are going to be somewhat different and beneficial to the larger community. So, we look at the same piece of information, we come to two different conclusions, and that's why I think the bridge has to go forward for the greater good of the community and the multimodal transportation for everybody. Multimodal being bikes, pedestrians, and motorized vehicles as well. And given that, I'm in support of the budget as presented with the potential subsequent alteration of donations that were presented under the guise of pedestrian and bike bridge.
With that, we're ready to go? Are we going to vote, or we...
I have another question. Mr. Mayor, Part B of this, authorize the mayor's execution, should be a separate motion, I'm assuming?
Two different actions. It will be two different actions.
Your Honor, for clarification, if I could have the maker of the motion apply his motion to the revised document, which was just passed out, so that we know exactly what's being voted on.
So, should I amend my motion to, or restate it?
I think if you just clarify it that because of the adjustment in the annexed property value given us by Latah County, that you wish to use the new ordinance, which has just been passed out.
Okay. I would say that I'm asking to approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings and to be read by title and published by summary, including the documentation that we've just received from Mr. Rehner.
I still second that.
Gavin, you had something you want to say before we get to roll here?
Mostly, I just wanted to speak on behalf of Les McDonald because he has presented to all these commissions and spent a lot of time to talk to you all about the big plan for Moscow. And he is forward-thinking, and he is doing things and is researching things. And I've had only a year and a half to work with him, but in that time, I've seen him doing these things. And so, I would appreciate you understanding that there were some things that were said that I didn't think were very nice, and I just want to speak on behalf of him.
Okay, with that, I'm going to start to roll. John, I'm going to start with you.
Aye.
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 Aye, aye, and aye.
Okay. Six eyes. Ordinance 2017-7. Ordinance 2017-07, an ordinance entitled Annual Appropriation Ordinance appropriating $79,896,719 for the purpose of defraying all necessary expenses and liabilities of the city of Moscow, Latah County, State of Idaho for the 2018 fiscal year, beginning the first day of October 2017 and ending the 30th day of September 2018, and allocating resources by fund for the said appropriation for objects and purposes set forth in this ordinance, levying any ad valorem taxes in the amount of $5,735,357 for the 2018 fiscal year, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from after its passage approval and publication according to law. Gary, now, does the B portion of this change as well for a amount?
No, we had amended the L-2 previously, so we just need the authorization for you to exercise, to execute the L-2 based upon the ordinance.
Okay, so with the $5,735,339 is correct?
Whatever is in the ordinance is what the L-2 were reflected.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A question for Gary, if I may.
357. Okay, go ahead.
It's different. Gary, the ordinance that you just passed out?
Yes.
Has 5,735,357 in the title?
Yep.
And Section 3 has a 5,645,216.
It has to do with the way the state tax commission calculates property taxes. You include the cost of replacement property taxes for personal property and property taxes for farm equipment. You include it in the amount that you multiply by the amount the council is going to take for taxes, in this case, 3%. You calculate it on that amount, then you deduct about $90,071, I believe, out of that amount because that's what the statute requires us to do.
Okay, so my short question for a short answer, this is correct?
Numbers are correct.
Thank you.
The L-2 will reflect the numbers in the ordinance.
Okay.
But the number on the agenda is different from what's in the thing you just handed me?
Yes. The agenda was published. The ordinance, as I indicated, is off because of the annexation value given us by Latah County today.
What, I got 5,735,357? So, you got?
That's this one, but the one on the agenda says 339.
Yeah, so we need...
So, we're using this one?
The one that I passed out.
So, if I was to make a motion, which I'm going to, to approve Part B of this, authorize the mayor's execution of the L-2 property tax certification in the aggregate amount of $5,735,357. That would be the correct motion.
Second.
John.
Okay, we got a motion by Jim. John, second and beating the punch, Walter. On item number B, authorize the mayor's execution of L-2 property tax certification in the aggregate amount of $5,735,357. Start to roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay. Now, we will move that forward, A and B. So, just to thank you, everybody, that participated this evening. I know it was a little bit tight, but I thank you all. We're very well-mannered. Thank you so very much. Have a nice evening. And we are going to move on to item number seven, which is Third Street Grind and Inlay, 2017, change order number one. You going to have Tyler do it, Les?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Tyler Palmer, you are here, so please carry it forward, sir.
All right. Mayor, Council, well, what I have for you tonight is pretty enthralling. I don't suspect it'll generate the public comment of the last one, but I'll try and keep everybody awake. We actually have, this is a pretty exciting agenda item that we have here. You'll recall on June 19th, the council approved a base bid for a grind and inlay project. The grind and inlay project was largely a result of, as we've discussed at length, we have a road system that needs some maintenance, but with this past winter, we had a very difficult winter on the roads, and we had some premature degradation on some of our primary routes. So, through that process, we put out a bid that was approved by the council with Motley and Motley for a base bid of $207,159. And that included doing Third Street, several blocks of Third Street from Washington, working our way east. It'll eventually tie into a project, which will be completed next summer, which will give us new pavement surfaces all the way from Hayes to Washington. So, that's a pretty exciting stretch to get done. And it also included a section of A Street. The A Street project would be a continuation of a grind and inlay project that we started last summer. This was really due to largely good management of the Streets Fund. We've done it out of maintenance dollars. We did that last year, and we plan on doing this stretch again this year out of maintenance funds. And the continuation of the grind and inlay on A Street will tie into what will eventually be the A Street project that is upcoming on A Street. So, then, again, that'll give us a nice, complete, new pavement surface on that stretch. We subsequently applied for emergency relief funds. Emergency relief funds were made available, and there was a $15 million statewide made available, and there were applications that were solicited, and we applied, we put in three different applications, and we're very pleased to be awarded emergency relief funds for Joseph Street. This is an image from our flood event that happened in May of this year, excuse me, March of this year. It was the highest waters that we've had since the '96 floods, and this is the intersection right here of Joseph and Mountain View. This backhoe is sitting right where the overflow channel is on Joseph and Mountain View, and you can't see it really well, but this whole intersection is flooded. You can kind of see the lights reflecting off the water here. Water is the primary enemy of roads. It's, our biggest goal is to keep water out of the base. The road base underneath the road, especially with an asphalt road surface, is what provides integrity to the street surface, and the minute you start getting water in there, you start to lose the integrity of the roadway, and you can lose the road quickly. So, obviously, when we have a harsh winter, freeze thaw, it exacerbates cracking, and then we have high-water events, groundwater comes up, water's coming down from the surface, and it can really rapidly degenerate a road surface. And we saw that on Joseph Street here. So, we applied for ERF funding, the emergency relief funding, for Joseph Street, and we were awarded in the second round of the review. And so, we're really happy about that. It gave us a really great opportunity to get in and do that. What had been proposed for this road was an almost identical process to what had been proposed for Third Street. So, in having that already had gone through a competitive bid process, what we have before you today is a proposal to extend that contract so that we can proceed with this really critical work on Joseph Street. This gives you an idea for the area that we're talking about. We're talking about right at the ballfields. This stretch of Joseph Street sees a lot more traffic due to the ballfields, a lot of out-of-town traffic. It gets a lot of attention, and so it's a road that wasn't in the best of shape before, but now it's getting more vehicle traffic and just more people paying attention to it because we do have so, because our community ballfield project was so popular and is attracting tournaments and, you know, high school sports, and so it's a pretty important stretch of roadway there. This is the actual project boundaries here. We stopped just short of Meadow Street. I'd like to note that our slurry sill project that we're continuing for the next couple days, we're about halfway through, will come up and meet right where this project would leave off, and so we'll have a nice surface going all the way from Mountain View up past El Cajon. And so, it's a really good opportunity for the city. There's a 10% match on these grant funds, and so we had some pavement management funds that we'll be able to fund this project with. It's a reimbursement that we would then get from the emergency relief funds. And so, what's before you tonight is Change Order One for the Third Street Grind and Inlay for the, excuse me, yeah, Change Order One for the Third Street Grind and Inlay Project, which would allow us to conduct this Joseph Street Grind and Inlay, which will eventually be reimbursed with the emergency relief funds. And with that, I stand for any questions you might have.
Is that going to happen this summer, Tyler?
Actually, if the council approves this, we would grind this section tomorrow.
Ooh.
Ooh.
And this is why this bypass committee and came directly to council is because, obviously, we're really restricted on our construction season this far north, north of the 45th, and so we just, we have such a short window to get things done that with, we were lucky enough that we had a pro, the same project that was proposed for this, we'd already had bid, and so we had the opportunity to do this by change order. Otherwise, with as busy as everybody is, we really wouldn't have a chance, but the grinder was going to be in town anyway, so we actually got a very competitive bid on adding this portion of the project, and so we're pretty excited about that.
Your Honor, this will be coming through in the open budget process on August 21st.
Okay, what does that have to do with anything now?
We'll receive the revenues.
What's that, you want us to wait?
We'll receive the revenues in an open budget process.
Okay, all right.
I just had a question, if I may.
Go ahead.
It was just interesting for me when I was looking at the diagram with the four-inch grind, is that where the rut is?
So, yeah, there's, you're absolutely right. On the south side of the street, we have more, we have more base issues.
Yeah.
And so, there are different ways a street can wear, and the bottom-up wearing is the really insidious wearing that we try and take care of, and that's when the base has really been compromised. And so, we can take care of the surface in a lot of the areas, but where we have the really broken up areas is where we have the bottom-up cracking, and that's more prevalent on that south side. So, those areas indicate where we're going to have to go deeper in order to remedy what's going on with the pavements out there.
Thanks.
Walter. My wife, who drives this daily, told me if I didn't vote yes for this, there would be consequences. I did not ask her what those would be, but for that reason, I would make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we approve Change Order Number One for the Third Street Grind and Inlay Project.
I second that. Okay. We got a motion by Walter, a second by Art, to approve the Change Order Number One for the Third Street Grind and Inlay Project for additional work on Joseph Street. I'll start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 Aye. And aye.
Grinder down tomorrow, Tyler. Thank you very much.
Good to be going tomorrow.
All right. That brings us to item number eight, which is the Paradise Path SH Underground Multimodal Extension Design Agreement. Les, you had the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This particular project is one that has been around a while, and we're glad to be able to bring you the next piece of this. This actually began, ooh, probably about seven or eight years ago with discussions at the Transportation Commission, and we were talking about people's concerns about how do we cross the highways in this community in a safe manner? We had conversations with the Idaho Transportation Department back at that time. Dave Couch was the traffic engineer for District Two in Lewiston then, and he supported the concept, as did others at ITD. Eventually, it made its way to the Paradise Path Task Force, now the Moscow Pathways Commission, and they recommended that we pursue an underpass of State Highway Eight at White Avenue. It was also a student capstone project at University of Idaho that did some of the initial work, what it might look like, and whether or not it might be feasible from a hydraulic perspective to put a pathway system under an existing bridge underneath the state highway. So, we have pursued this over the years, and you've seen it come to you in the past in terms of grant applications, and we were successful in obtaining funding through a grant to pursue the project. So, the step we're at now is the design services contract to allow us to proceed with design with the intent of constructing this in an upcoming construction season. So, just to help orient folks just a little bit, this is the intersection of State Highway Eight, otherwise known as the Troy Highway, for those folks on that side of town, and White Avenue. So, the Tesoro Gas Station located here, Paradise Path passing through here, and this is the multi-lane concrete section of State Highway Eight. The situation you see out there, this is a fairly recent picture, but it looks often like this, where we have two lanes of traffic in either direction. There are some bike lanes in either direction in this section, right turn pockets for the folks turning on the Steiner that are heading eastbound at that point, and a location that is not terribly friendly to pedestrians that are crossing the highway. And we see quite a few of them, frankly, that are trying to make it over to the gas station and to other businesses there on the north section of White Avenue. And so, the concept really is to take advantage of the fact that we've got a trail in close proximity to the bridge that the highway department has built over the years that crosses over Paradise Creek, so which is in this opening right here. So, that gives you a little different view. So, again, the highway's up here, I'm kind of standing on the path when the picture's taken. You can see this opening that exists under the bridge and the creek passing through there. Part of the big questions have been over the years, is there sufficient hydraulic capacity that we could lose a little bit with the construction of a path? And the answer is yes, if the path is low enough that at certain times of the year, it will be underwater. So, under higher flood events in mid-winter, early spring, it's likely the section of that path that we go under here would be closed for, you know, several days or maybe a week at a time, depending on what the water levels in the creek are doing. So, the overall project as proposed and as we've, for which we've received grants... So the overall project as proposed and as we've, for which we've received grant funding now, is to actually do more than just the bridge crossing itself, but to start with a path extension, if you will, off of the Paradise Path, cross into the highway and then run along the north side of White Avenue, all the way out to the area of the fairgrounds here across from the east side marketplace. And that would be consistent with our desire to improve multimodal transportation within the network of the overall city, putting in some pedestrian and bike facilities along the side of a street that don't currently have any, and just overall improvement in connections for bike and pedestrian traffic within the community. Zooming in on the bridge location a little bit, again, the intersection here. This is a sketch that was put together that shows generally what the path might look like coming down off of Paradise Path. At this point, it will be down at creek level or just above it, going underneath the structure of the highway, then coming back up the east bank to the point where it's back up at street level, connection back to the intersection with the sidewalks, and then the path continuing on to the east along the north side of White Avenue, working its way along here on these sections, and eventually coming all the way to the Blaine Street intersection and then continuing on over to, this one shows basically the entrance to the fairgrounds and also the entrance to the North Leito County Highway District shop at that spot. So that's in general what the project is. This is a rendering that was done, I believe, by the student group back in, oh, man, about 2009 or '10, if I recall, quite a few years ago now. This is actually would be looking south. And so the Paradise Path would be on the other side of the highway, coming down, as I mentioned, and then running underneath the bridge and then back up this bank to White Avenue. The crossing itself would have to be low enough so that we've got sufficient height for somebody on a bicycle to ride through here without meeting the girders above with their helmet. So we have to make sure it's low enough for that. As you drive it lower to give that sufficient space, then, as I said earlier, sometimes we'll be underwater here. Obviously, we'll have some seasonal closures for this type of a structure. This is not an uncommon situation. There are many of these around the country and they often experience temporary closures during high water events.
Pullman has one?
Pullman has one. If you're on the main highway, 272, going into Pullman on the viaduct as you're coming into the downtown, the second bridge crosses over the South Fork of the Plous River and on the west bank, or excuse me, the east bank in that location, there is a, I think it's only a four or five-foot concrete sidewalk that passes under that structure. It's probably a little low, but they do have one. And under really high events, that one also goes underwater. So what is before you this evening is a contract with Terographics, a firm here in the city of Moscow. They have done some work on this previously in that they did some hydraulic analysis for us to confirm what the flow would be through the bridge and then what the hydraulic capacity of the opening is. And if we were to construct this path, what effects that would have on the overall flow through the structure. So they've done some work previously for us on the project. What's before you tonight is the contract to actually perform the design services for the project as a whole. And so I guess with that, I would stand for any questions that you may have.
This is a really terrific project. Like you said, been talking about it for nine years to get this thing done, to get this wrapped up, to get the professional service agreement done in January of 2018 and get the construction in the summer of 2018. For now, it'd be terrific. Walter.
Les, could you go back to your slide that showed the detail of the intersection? Whoa, that one.
Mm-hmm.
Is it anticipated that this structure will
Nice one, there's both of them.
Be used to encourage people not to cross at street level over to the mini-mart?
Yeah, we really
I mean, is that the thinking?
Yeah, I think, you know, we're trying to provide an opportunity for folks to cross the system in a more comfortable way. And we have not identified a desire at this point to say, don't cross on the highway. It is still available for crossings, but I think our approach would be to encourage folks by making them aware that there is a under-highway crossing available, to use that crossing instead of using the highway itself.
Okay.
Now, as we get further into this, we could change our perspective and say, you know, just go use this. The challenge that you run into, though, is that there are that period of time where we maybe are closed.
Correct.
Then we need to cross above if people want to do so. So I'm a little leery of saying, don't cross here, but encourage.
Well, with it being said that it's an alternative, a preferred alternative, you've got the sidewalk coming back up to the intersection on the north side.
Here, yes.
Would it make sense to Y, as in the letter Y, on the south side so that, yes, instead of just coming from the west, you also have an entrance from the east?
Yeah, the challenge is the grade. We're coming up quite a ways in a short distance and trying to keep the grades at a reasonable level. You kind of need the distance to get over here before you actually finally really get back up to the path level. And if we try to cut it more to the southeast, I just don't know that we can make the grades work. We'll look at that further.
Steps.
But that would be, an alternative would be steps, just for a cutoff. We do have a drainage channel through here that we're trying to work with and a culvert shown there. So we'd have to modify that concept a bit, which can be done. So, yeah, you know, we can certainly look at that and see if there's some opportunity perhaps to give us a little bit of a cutoff there, probably.
Try to encourage people to use it and not go across the highway.
Yeah, I mean, we're not talking great distances to go a little bit further and then, you know, hook the U-turn back, but, you know, we could look at that in a little closer detail as we get into the design, certainly.
Other questions for Les?
I'd make a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Terographics in the amount of $58,522.75.
Second.
Was it you second?
She did.
Okay. We got a motion by Art and a second by Gina to approve the professional service contract with Terographics in the amount of $58,522.75. Start with you, Walter.
Aye.
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 There you go. Thank you, Les. And Les is up again. Item number nine, downtown parking program revisions.
The right button. This is an interesting one, how to begin. Over the course of many years, we have had multiple conversations about parking in the downtown core. And those of us that have served with the Transportation Commission over the years in our various capacities have experienced a lot of that. The big years were back in 2007 through 2009 when they spent about two years and the council spent, I think, about six months deliberating about what to do with downtown parking. So I want to give you just a little bit of history on some of what's happened over the years because a lot of the council members were not here at that time. So I want to give you just a quick background on that. And then we'll talk specifically about a proposed change that has been requested of the city as it relates to the overnight parking restriction area and modifying that boundary to the north. So this is the current map that's approved by the council that shows the parking overlays within the downtown core. So to help orient, again, Main Street here, running left and right, north is to the left. There are a variety of different colored lines and dash lines and solid lines on here that represent different regulations within the downtown, Central Business District and the nearby environs. First off, the solid red lines that you see here up along the highway, Main, North Main Street, those are the no parking zones, so 24/7, 365, no parking outright. That's primarily along the highway itself, portions of Sixth Street, portions of Third Street, a little bit of A. Then the three-hour parking zone is this kind of dashed orange line that wanders through here, okay, goes down around Gritman, and then kind of just pretty much right around the couplet, but not quite as far north and south as the extent of the couplet. Generally, the heart of the Central Business District, three-hour parking restriction. That was one of the big issues discussed back in 2009. Do we change that to, you know, 45 minutes, an hour, 90 minutes, leave it at three hours, you know, make it meter parking, whatever? In the end, the council chose not to change any of that. So it's three hours and it has been that ever since. So that's in that, kind of that core section. The next one you see is the green, well, let me skip to the purple first. So this purple dash line represents where we have an overnight parking restriction. So between the hours of 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM, there's no parking allowed there.
Is that now, Les, you're talking about?
This is current. This is what's in place today and has been for a few years. That used to be a 2:00 AM to 7:00 AM, but in '09, we updated it to 3:00 to 6:00 to shorten that timeframe because we had early business that was happening and that 7:00 AM was getting in the way. So within that zone, so that dashed purple line, that is the area where you cannot park overnight. And the reason for that is, in the Central Business District, we're trying to provide a higher level of service for street cleanliness, for removing of trash and debris and dirt and all those kind of things, but also for snow removal. Because there's a pretty good operation that goes on when you're trying to take snow out of a downtown core and not just pile it up in the parking in front of all the businesses. So we have nighttime operations, removing berms and just general plowing and de-icing and all those kind of things that are at a higher level within this area of the community and thus the need for the three-hour, or for the overnight restriction. Okay? Now, back in '09, we also recognized through those discussions that there were businesses downtown and residences downtown that have a need for overnight parking. So particularly the bars and the nightclubs that have patrons that come in and drink the alcohol or whatever they may do, we don't want them on the street. We don't want them driving home. So where do they park their cars? So the council at that time felt that that needed to be addressed. We also recognized that there are a lot of residents downtown in those upstairs, you know, second, third-story level apartments, all through the downtown core, more than people probably realize. So at that time, in '09, the council said, hey, we need to probably recognize that and do some things to allow some overnight parking on select locations where that's where the green is, okay? To allow places for those cars to be parked for residents and those folks that shouldn't be driving. So that's what's in place today. Now, we're going to be talking a little bit about this location because the requests that we have received from four or five different applicants is to modify this overnight parking restriction to include this area here to the north. And I'm going to run you through a couple of maps real quick that just kind of show you the progression. And part of the reason this, I want you to understand that it's somewhat of a fluid process. And the council has, over the years, made changes based on the conditions that were in place at the time. And that's something that I think is important as we look at this particular one because some of the conditions have changed. All right, so going back, not to the very beginning, but just far enough, 1981, this is back in the era, just before the main couplet was being constructed and we were moving, starting to move traffic off of Main Street and put it into the couplet area. That was right in this '81, '82 timeframe. So this was the map adopted back at that time. We had in the yellow, the 2:00 AM to 7:00 AM overnight restriction. You can see it goes a long ways to the north because Main Street was the highway at that time. And so that was how they took care of it. We put the three-hour parking limitation in place and that was about it, right? That's what we had. The little blue star here represents the location, the block we're talking about tonight. And that'll show up here as we go through. So you can see how it's gone in and out of the regulated parking overlays. 1983, so a couple of years later, now it's in. We've included it in the overnight 2:00 AM to 7:00 AM restriction. So we've expanded to the north, made a few other changes here and there. I think we added a little bit further off to the west on Third and Sixth Street. And then in 2009, after the parking wars, as we like to refer to it, we were looking at these types of scenarios where we had, again, in green, that overnight restriction. Everything in the pink is kind of the three-hour parking. You can see our site here to the north. In May of 2009, this is just the overnight line, just for clarification. And this is how we changed things in May of 2009. This is where we added the allowable overnight parking, okay? And then changed it from 2:00 to 7:00 AM restriction to a 3:00 to 6:00 AM. It's hard to read, but that's what that is. 3:00 to 6:00 AM, so we changed the hours. And we excluded this part of town as well as a little bit here. And I think the primary reason that was done, as I recall, was the fact that that neighborhood was in flux and it had been seeing some businesses leave, like Stewki's, I think it closed at that point. And there were some other things happening in there where we just weren't seeing the level of commercial activity that really warranted the same heightened maintenance attention that we were seeing in the rest of the Central Business District. So the council at that time said, you know, probably makes sense to go ahead and cut this out. So that was the action that was taken. We actually expanded a little bit to the south here where Gritman was doing their thing and they've expanded, of course, over the years. And so seeing some need there to put those overnight restrictions and enhanced maintenance in that part of Main Street. So that's what was adopted in '09. In July, oh, this is the actual ordinance drawing, in 2013, so four years later, we looked at this again and I've lost what we did. Okay, we'll move on. In 2016 was the last time we looked at this particular area. And the change that was made here was we added one more section of overnight allowed parking here at the request of the residents that were in this particular block. So that was the last change. Again, we're still outside with this particular block we're talking about now. So, current situation? This is the map that shows from '09 that shows what we cut out back in '09 from the overnight restriction. This is the aerial of that particular block. So this is the couplet, Main Street, down to the couplet onto Jackson, heading southbound, Main Street here. This is Jackson and D, Rozars. What was Stewki's now is the Hunga Dunga Brewery, the recycle center. We've got, I think, State Farm in here, the Rancen Raves Brewery here, we've got Culligan, Viral Science, there's some other businesses here and up in this area. The coffee shop, drive-through here, Dutch Brothers. This is the parking lot triangle that the council approved renting to Rancen Raves a couple of years ago. You'll remember that one coming through. So that's the area we're talking about. And the reason I'm pointing all these out is what we're seeing is kind of a resurgence of activity on the commercial front in this section of downtown. It's not in the Central Business District, but it is in the general business. And we are seeing more activity, more vehicular traffic, more congestion, and frankly, probably a need for a greater level of maintenance. That is what we typically do with the overnight restrictions. So that is the current boundary as of '09 on the overnight restriction. And what's being proposed is this boundary change. This went to the Transportation Commission after we had received requests at staff level to look into the situation. We talked with Transportation. The boundary that was proposed by staff initially came along North Main and actually included all of D Street, so both sides, and then down the west side of Jackson back to the current boundary. What was discussed at Transportation, and I think was a very valid point, was one of the things that we addressed in '09 was the fact that there were bar patrons downtown and we didn't want them to drive. Well, now we have two breweries here, in essence, bar patrons that we don't want to drive if they're out in the evening and they need a place to park their car. And so the Transportation Commission recommended that we pull this boundary back and exclude the north side of D Street from the restriction. So that's what is before you this evening as the, what would become the new boundary that is the exhibit that the resolution would adopt if you choose to do so. So in summary, the idea here is to take the current boundary, extend it north, up Main Street, center of Main Street, highway, westerly along the center of D Street, and then down the west side of Jackson back to the C Street intersection. That would mean both sides of Jackson would be restricted overnight parking and the south side of D Street only would have restricted overnight parking. No effect on the highway because it's all no parking anyway outright. So with that, I would hopefully answer any other questions that you might have.
I think you covered it pretty well from the last 35 years or so. Walter.
Thank you, Mayor. Les, from the documentation we've got in here, it appears that Rancen Raves is storing trucks and other vehicles along that east side of Jackson in front of their business. From the pictures we're given and the comments that are given to us, is leaving the north side of D available for overnight parking going to move all those rigs over there?
Well, I believe, again, based on the applications for traffic revisions that we received here referring to in the packet, yeah, that was part of the reasoning for the requests from those business owners, was that they were seeing increased number of vehicles associated with Rancen Raves. of vehicles associated with Rancen Raves in the area, and...
They were not being moved?
Not being moved, or if they were being moved, because we do have a 48-hour restriction, you know, they're being moved across the street, they're being moved up and down a couple of spaces perhaps, but there were enough of them, and it was frequent enough that I think that spurred on some of those business owners to make the request. Would that problem go away with this proposal? I think it would go away from the perspective of where the most congestion is occurring, and the most businesses that is occurring, is happening, which is Jackson.
It would solve Jackson.
I think we solved that. Could those vehicles then just move to the north side of D Street? Yeah, I think they certainly could, and then it would be just a matter of the 48-hour restriction that's in place on all our streets.
Yeah, but the 48 hours is not enforced.
It's a challenging one to enforce, absolutely. So, yes, it potentially could move those vehicles to the north side of D Street. The, I guess, the positive of that is, it would free up the parking where it's most needed, and the most activity is occurring on Jackson. The downside is, perhaps, if we're losing some of that parking then that we wanted to have available for the breweries, for patrons to park their vehicles instead of driving, they'd be competing for those spaces.
Well, information, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is typical of what we found when we studied downtown parking in...
Seven, eight, nine.
Oh, seven, eight, and nine. That the business owners and employees park at the front door of their businesses, and then complain that the customers cannot find a parking place. You know, it's just amazing. I would vote to approve this, but I was wondering, is there some way we could put an asterisk on it, that if the north side of D becomes a business storage parking lot, that we extend this to include that side, and make it available for those patrons that need a place to leave their car overnight, so they can get home with another ride, or walk, or call a cab? I mean, I think it solves the Jackson Street problem. I like it.
And if I...
Gary, I see you raising your hand over there.
Yeah, certainly you can amend the ordinance, or bring in, or, excuse me, resolution in the future. I would also note that these businesses are required to have a certain amount of parking in conjunction with their businesses, in order to meet zoning requirements, something which is not required in the Central Business District. So, the businesses that you're looking at here all have parking lots to accommodate the required zoning requirements. So, the need isn't the same typically, as it would be downtown, where there is almost no private parking lots available, that are in conjunction with someone's business.
So, your point?
The point is, is that there is overnight parking available to the patrons of these businesses, within the parking lots required as the zoning requirement. So, the on-street parking overnight isn't, the need isn't the same as the need in the Central Business District.
Yeah, my ear has been well chewed on this issue for some while, and I don't think would have come to this point were it not for continued less-than neighborly behavior on the part of one company there. So, given that we can always come back and modify the resolution later, if it turns out that the north side of D Street is becoming congested with parking for business vehicles, we can change it again. But as is, I think we should give this a go, and approve it, and see how it works out.
Are you making a motion?
I just have a question.
Okay, Catherine.
I just want a clarification. They, Rancen Raves did, is renting the triangle space, right?
Yeah, the city council approved a lease with the Rancen Raves Brewery for a portion of city property right here. It's east of the Jackson right-of-way, and south of the A Street right-of-way, that's, or, excuse me, the C Street right-of-way in here. So, a little portion in here, that provides, I think it's either eight or nine stalls right there, and that's what they needed, to allow them to have the private parking that Gary's referring to, as required in the general business.
And it's 24 hours. It's not just for limited, it's not just from like, it's just their time?
They can park their, yeah, it's their parking, and, I mean, the intent of parking is for business and for customer. How they choose to use it is certainly up to them.
Okay.
So, I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Jim got it.
Okay, I got a motion by Art, and a second by Jim, to approve the resolution. I'll start with John.
Aye.
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 Mr. Mayor, one other item on this, please, if I may.
Okay, sure.
Last, in the letter from Culligan Water, in the third from last paragraph, the next-to-last sentence has a comment in it that I asked that we take a look at, and inform Ms. Williams what the actual situation is. She talks about them illegally parking in that triangle, I think.
That's why I asked the question.
And so, if we could look and see what she's really talking about, and make sure she understands their leasing space.
We can do that.
Thank you.
No, no.
Okay, we are going to move on to item number 10, proposed amendment to open container law. Rod Hall has the podium.
Good evening. Under Moscow City Code, we prohibit open containers of alcohol beverages in any public places, or any place or places open to the public, unless council authorizes, or it's permitted by law, such as when we allow beer gardens at our community events downtown, in the Central Business District, when they do the street closures, or even at the rendezvous in the park events. There are certain events where council has special resolutions to allow that. What I would like to talk tonight about is about tailgating at the University of Idaho Vandal football games. The city is aware that during these events, there are some people that like to consume alcohol as part of their tailgating activities. And right now, with the university in kind of flux, and not knowing if they can have tailgating there or not, if we, if they're prohibited from having alcohol there, and we enforce our open containers laws, I think our biggest concern is that people will move to a different location to do their tailgating activities, and then will put the rest of the public at risk to drive back to the community, or back to the event. So, the amendment today in front of you would exempt the area around the Kibbe Dome on home football games from the hours of 10:00 in the morning to 10:00 in the evening. So, that's what you have tonight.
Okay. All right. Well, I think it's a good idea to keep them corralled there. It's going to go on anyway, one place or another, and this just provides less conflict between practice and law, and I think overall, it's a good idea to have this put into place.
I'd say one more thing, too. We did talk with the university before we proposed this. They didn't come forward and ask us to do that. They're not proponents behind this, but I talked to the general counsel today, and he thinks that it's a common sense solution to this issue.
I would also note that general counsel was at the Administrative Committee when this was considered as well.
From the university?
Yes.
Walter. In the packet, there is a drawing of the campus, and a red area is marked out.
Correct.
That's a lot more than the Kibbe Dome lot.
Um, it's, but there's no residence there. It's also includes the place where people camp. So, it covers most of the parking lot.
It includes the Hartone. It's hard to read the map. I mean, it's the way it's turned and all that.
Well, it's just the street. It's Sixth Street, all the way down, and goes up Rayburn perimeter.
So, it includes the Ag Building?
It includes what's commonly known as the Law School parking lot.
Parking lots.
Uh, Sixth Street north to the east-west portion of Perimeter Drive.
Okay.
From Rayburn over to Perimeter Drive to the west. Does not include the facilities parking lots.
John.
Yeah, it looked to me, when I looked at this, and then I was at the Administrative Committee, when we said it should move forward. I think that what happened is, that was drawn around the streets, and you've got a border to the north on Sixth Street, to the east on Rayburn, and then it goes into the Perimeter Drive, that does encompass the parking lot. And most of the area is not where anybody's going to be drinking anyway, because a lot of it is too steep, especially on the south side, but I think having it bordered by streets makes a lot of sense.
Makes it easier to define it.
Pardon me?
Easier to define it.
Yeah, yeah. That's exactly, I mean, I'm in favor of this. I think we can, that way turn the Moscow police, instead of having to turn a blind eye to something, they can now do what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, I agree with John. It removes ambiguity for our police officers, and I think that's a good thing.
With that, I move to approve the ordinance amending the open container law.
Keep going.
Keep going.
I'm sorry, that was, oh, sorry. Under the suspension of the rules, requiring three complete and separate readings, and that'd be read by title and published by summary.
Second.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion by Catherine, and a second by Gina, to approve the ordinance amending the open container law under the suspension of the rules, requiring three complete and separate readings, that'd be read and titled by title and published by summary. Start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, and this is resolution, or, ordinance 2017-08. An ordinance of the City of Moscow, Idaho, municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment in Moscow City Code Title 10, Chapter 1, relating to the exemption to the open container prohibition on certain event days, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deinterable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. Okay, item number 11, request from Leittau County for McConnell Mansion renovation. Gary, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. This was presented to the Public Works Finance Committee, or, two Mondays ago, excuse me, and it is a request from the Leittau County Commission and the Leittau County Historical Society to participate in some renovation expenses for the McConnell Mansion. Within the documentation you have in your packet, it is an extensive renovation that is necessary. There's a recognition by the county that it will take many years in order for the county to fund those improvements. What they're requesting at this time is assistance in the very critical improvements, the roof, the widow's walk, to get the building, hopefully, as Dulce Kirsting, the executive director of Leittau County Historical Society says, back to its previous grandeur. So, what they are requesting is assistance in the amount of $19,750 to participate in those renovations. What you have in your packets is an accounting of the non-prioritized projects funding line item in the legislative budget. It currently has a balance of $10,500 remaining, after previous commitments the council has made. So, with that, the direction given by Public Works Finance, after a presentation by the Leittau County Commissioners, who all attended that meeting, was that the council, or the committee, would like to approve the $10,500 remaining in FY 2017, to assist with the $19,750 ask, and that after the FY 2018 budget is approved, that staff has been instructed to bring the balance of that $19,750 back to city council for consideration. So, the action tonight, if the council wants to move forward with it, is to approve the funding request requested by Leittau County, in the remaining amount of the, available amount of the legislative reserve budget, non-prioritized projects, in the amount of $10,500.
Okay. Gina.
Your Honor, I'm very in favor of this, so I'm just going to make a motion. How's that? I move that we consider and approve the request from Leittau County Commissioners to assist in the restoration of the McConnell Mansion in the amount of $10,500.
One second.
Okay, further discussion before I call for a roll?
I just would like to, you know, reiterate that the committee was interested in funding the entire $19,750, as requested, and presume that council, that staff will bring this back after October 1, or whatever time is appropriate, to reach into next year's money. And by the way, the county's doing the same thing. They're taking part out of this year, part out of next year. The work won't be done until next spring, anyway, because everybody, all the contractors are tied up, so it won't be any hardship on the project.
Okay, well, we've got a motion by Gina to approve, consider and approve, from Leittau County Commissioners, assistance in restoration of McConnell Mansion, amount of $10,500. John, second. I'll start the roll with you, John.
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay, we are chiseling through. Item number 12, consideration, City Moscow Mayor, City Council salary adjustments. Gary Reader has got the floor again.
Now, we're all going to get a significant raise.
It's just a whopper.
Let's present this for those of us wanting for election.
I didn't even know we got paid.
This seems to be the evening for passing out slight changes to documentation. What we have before you is a request that Idaho Code and Moscow City Code requires that the council adjusts council salaries every two years in an election year, prior to the holding of the municipal election, which is what you have here today. The amount of the adjustment is the cost of living adjustment, which has been granted to city employees in the previous two fiscal years, so what you have before you today is an ordinance that does that. You have a 1.3 adjustment in 2015, CPI of 1.3, and in 2016, a 1.6 CPI for a total of 2.9 percent. The reason that the code is set up that way is that they wanted to make council adjustments in time for people, if they desire to stand for election, and the salary is a big part of that decision. They wanted to make sure that you knew that. I will note that the reason you were handed out a different ordinance tonight was because, due to a miscalculation, the council and the mayor were underpaid the last two years. It was a significant amount of underpayment.
Sixty-six, twenty bucks.
You can see from the ordinance, the difference in the mayor's salary, which he was underpaid, was a dollar and 89 cents per month, and in the council salaries, the difference was 66 cents per month. So, we have changed that accounting.
Adjustments.
It is now correct, so the ordinance that you have before you today is based upon that.
Gary, I would go along with this, as long as you were personally responsible for my 66 cents a month.
I think I could probably cover that for the last two years. I want to note that I was not finance director at the time those calculations were made.
Okay, fair enough.
Well, I move to approve the attached ordinance, making salary adjustments for the mayor and city council effective January 1, 2018, under suspension of the rules, requiring three complete and separate readings, and it be read by title and published by summary.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Art, and a second by Catherine, to approve the attached ordinance, making the salary adjustments for the mayor and city council, effective January 1, 2018, under the suspension of the rules, requiring three complete and separate readings, and it be read by title and published by summary. I'll start the roll with you, Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, that is the end of our agenda, but you have ordinance 20...
Is your honor?
Yeah, I think I got it. 2017-09? 09? Is 9 correct? It is, right? Okay. Well, I make sure. An ordinance amending Title 1, Chapter 8 of the Moscow City Code, providing for increases in the salary of city officers, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deinterable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. You know, with that, it's the end of our evening. It is quite late. I would entertain a motion to adjourn and forego board reports until next week.
I would still move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. opposed? Meeting is adjourned at 10:29. Thank you, everybody.